Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining tonight. Hopefully, we can be over with this fresh start work session, you know, council retreat by nine o'clock tonight. Hopefully, this is an ability for all of us to be able to openly communicate with each other and just talk about things that are happening. The idea is for this to come out to be that we can all have an understanding of each other at the end of the meeting and how do we can communicate better with this group as we are going to be the leaders moving this city forward for the foreseeable future. So, we have Ken Fox here. Give it off to Ken and hand it off if anybody else has anything that they'd like to say. Scott wants to throw his phone at us. That is squirrels. Hand it off to Ken. Thank you so much for being here tonight and we look forward to hearing from you.
Well, thanks and thanks for letting me come join you. Thanks for the dinner. Good, good choice of place that grabs something to eat. I enjoyed having a chance to talk to those of you that I did have a chance to talk to, but I'm glad to meet you because I haven't had a chance to talk to yet. Zach and I had a couple of conversations and as I talked to others of you, we put together, or I put together this agenda, but I'm an outsider. I'm here to support a conversation and help facilitate whatever you would find to be productive. And just from the chat around the table, we all know each other pretty well, it seems. And so, I'm sort of new to the group. One of the things that we had talked about doing was starting off with something a little bit fun, but I don't know if it's something you already know about each other, and that is, are there things that you don't know about each other, maybe in terms of hobbies or interests that might be kind of interesting to learn a little bit more about? And I thought, I mean, we're here to do work, but just to kind of start off, let the food digest a little bit. Maybe what we could do is, if you're interested, I've got some cards. You can just write something down. I'll collect them and read them and then we guess who it is, just to kind of...
It's always a fun one.
Have you done it before?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do that at team building.
Okay. Are you, are you game to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, I happen to have my little envelope here.
Still have my first ballot to get.
So, if everybody just wants to take a card and maybe just jot something down that you think others may not know about you, either about a hobby or an interest or whatever you think might be interesting to share, and then I'll collect them and read them and we'll see how accurately you understand. I'm, I'm an easy mark because you don't know me at all, so I could write almost anything. Chances are pretty, except for the phone calls. I did say a few things about myself.
Yeah.
I have.
So, just a fun fact?
Yeah, a fun fact, something you're interested, like something that maybe the group doesn't yet know about you that they could be interested in. Maybe a fun fact or something that you've, you've enjoyed, thank you. Something you enjoy doing that maybe you haven't shared a hobby or whatever. Just a little, and then give us a chance just to do a little bit of guessing.
Be cheating over here.
Geez, sorry, you're chewing out my face. I gave a midterm today and I was watching people doing a lot of this.
Anybody else need a pen?
I'm good.
More for me then.
Feel like we're in a jury room. Ballots are coming in. Business law and negotiation. No, no, you'll be able to call it out when, when people gasp.
I was gonna put something. I'm a cop in the room.
That's an easy one, but if you see it on my desk.
I'm a third generation cop. Anybody that knows.
I didn't know it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to narrow it down if it were all that.
I would've figured it out real quick.
Although, maybe somebody else could.
I don't know. Yeah, you know. I would've had to say I'm a third generation cop and a liar.
And a liar.
Well, you're a liar.
You know, my grandfather used to say that, said, "Why do you want to be a liar?" All right, let's start it off.
Hold on, we got one more.
Oh, excellent. Come on, I'm a slow rider.
Nope, you're, you're thoughtful.
Just one, just wondering.
No, just one thing.
That might give you away.
Giving a walleye.
All right. Okay, let's see what we've got. All right. What? I enjoy, submit, how about we do this? Maybe take another card and write down who you think each one is, and then we'll see how it folks do. I'll number these.
No, we're not gonna sound them off right away.
We should do it right away. Do you want to do it right away? All right. Okay, we'll do it right away. Yeah, we'll make those ones up as we go. That's fine. That's perfectly fine. Okay, number one. I enjoy the 500 Club, missed my calling as a rocker.
David. That was my initial thought, too. I don't know what the 500 Club is, but that's...
It's Carter either. What is it?
Cards, isn't it?
It's cards?
So, how many votes are there for David, 500? How many, how many things?
You got one, two.
Okay. Any other, any other thoughts?
Scott? I could, I could see Scott.
I've seen so many Journey t-shirts.
I'm looking to see this product trying to be extra cool.
I think it's Scott.
I'm gonna go with Scott.
Okay, all the votes in. All right, will the real rocker please identify themselves?
That'd be me.
Was I writing down the 500 Club card?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, what's the backstory? Do you play an instrument?
No, I wish I did.
Okay.
In order to play it, you gotta pick it up.
Didn't you buy a guitar?
That's been my, that's been my problem.
I do have a guitar, but...
Yeah, he never picked it up.
The only, the only two songs I could play was Yankee Doodle Dandy and Happy Birthday.
Okay. Smoke on the water? Both that?
I feel like, I feel like three chords.
We missed some campaign told my wife many times. I'd spend $10,000 to learn how to play that guitar, but you gotta pick it up to do that.
My dear buddy says, "I'm getting the band back together." Say, "You were never in a band."
That's why they don't answer my calls. That's a great one. Thank you. That's learning something new. Okay. I like to be outdoors. Also drove Combine after high school. Feed, I think it says Feed.
Paul.
That's Paul.
Zach.
I think it's Zach grew up in Andor.
He's a hick for sure.
Yeah, I could say he's Zach.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Some people don't take that.
That sounds great.
It's a compliment.
For all the votes, all the votes.
Can you read it again?
Yeah. I like to be outdoors. I also drove Feed Combine after high school. I don't know if I'm reading the one word correctly, P or Feed.
I'm going with Travis.
That's Paul for sure.
Dennis?
If it had said third generation Combine.
That I would've been Paul.
But it's definitely not me.
All right, will the real combine driver raise their hand?
Yay!
Pe combine, sorry, I read it wrong. Good job. Good job. So, what is a pe combine? Like harvest peas? Okay.
Worked for Seneca.
Okay.
Oh, excellent. Should've got that one.
Down in...
You knew where it was. I know.
Up around here or down south?
At least, or...
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. I've got cousins in Fairmont. Well, my wife has cousins in...
It was still all hours of the night.
Yeah, we worked 16, 17 hour days.
Wow. The first time I had super sweet corn was down there. It was August, visiting with my wife's cousins in Fairmont. Let's go get some corn. I'm from California. We drove down, you know, the truck was in the parking lot. It was still warm from the fields. I'd never had anything so sweet.
I hadn't driven in a snowplow.
All right, excellent, excellent. All right, let's see what's next. Hobbies, horse riding particularly.
Marty.
Marty.
But wait, there's more. Wait, there's more.
I knew it would take that long.
Eventing, which is three disciplines, stadium jumping, cross-country jumping, and dressage. Did I pronounce it correctly, dressage?
That's like me putting three generations of...
So, is this, is this English riding or Western riding?
It's English, yeah.
Okay.
Marty, what do you wear when you go riding?
I couldn't possibly tell you. These questions are getting a little personal here. I'll show you on Saturday, okay?
Jennifer can outfit you.
Oh, good God.
Did you ride around here?
You'd never see me again.
Do you ride around here still?
Yeah, yeah. My horses, one of my horses boarded in now, then currently, a stable there, so I can ride there during the winter. I have two retired horses at home, so we'll be starting to do some training outdoors as soon as weather gets better. I got a clinic in April on a cross-country course, so...
What do, what do horses do in the winter? Do you have to take them out and exercise?
Oh, I ride all winter, yeah. We have an indoor arena, so ride indoors in the winter, so.
Very cool.
So, have a few jumps inside and hope you don't hit your head on the rafters.
You get that on, yeah.
Depends if he's feeling a little bit bucky or not.
That's great. I have caught a 48-inch northern, but still haven't caught a 30-inch walleye.
That's a Zach thing.
Are you an avid Fisher person?
I am.
Do you like go out before work and try and...
This was a little obvious. I should've just wrote third generation cop on there.
Third generation finance. No, first generation finance.
Now, there are two rivers that come together here, right?
Over there.
All I know is my car's out there. That's the closest I get. Is there good fishing on them or do you go other places?
Oh, there's smallmouth on those rivers.
Okay.
They do a lot of fishing, so.
Okay. Nice.
The rum is usually pretty good.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Do you catch walleyes or do you cook them all?
Oh, release, a lot of them. I eat them because they taste good, but once I have so many in my ass, enough, let's just throw it back.
Right. Well, that's cool. Ever catch the same one twice?
I feel like it some days.
Do they look at you like, "Not gonna happen"?
Yeah, sure.
Ah, weightlifting.
David Fisher.
That's all that was on there was weightlifting?
Weightlifting, right to the point.
Or outdoors.
This is the one that said outdoors.
Weightlifting.
Do I really look like it? Do I do that?
We didn't say anything.
I would think Amy. I would think Amy. Thank you.
We didn't say anymore.
It ain't, yeah. Very narrowed though.
Pretty A, yeah.
Okay. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Good for you. I could not say that about me. I should, but I can't.
Maybe what you did, didn't you, I do when I stand up?
I'm right with him. I'm right there.
I strive to do something significantly new every year. Visit a new continent, fly a plane, et cetera.
That's David Fisher for sure.
I could see, I could see that being David.
He's got the poker face on.
So, is, are the votes in? Is it David?
Not me.
Not you?
It's Matt.
Good job. So, have you learned to fly?
I've taken, uh, one, I went up flying once.
Okay.
Have you gone skydiving yet?
Paragliding in Switzerland. That was fun, running up and down. It was like 45, it was a good day, 45 minutes in the air. We kept catching the thermals and going up and down.
Nice. Nice. So, how many continents have you been to?
Uh, four.
Okay, nice. Do you have a fave?
Antarctica. They're all just different. They're all fun. Asia was really cool. There's, I mean, it's interesting when you travel places that like, history to us is nothing, like to them, history is like 5,000 years. For us in the US, it's, if you want, so it's just a different mindset, yeah. All of them are great, just different.
Very cool. Yeah, I grew up near LA, so a building that was before World War II is on the historic list, so, yeah, age is very different parts of the country and world.
It's getting picked on over there.
Sorry.
It's usually for the one nobody knows. I have worked on three different farms and work on my house in my spare time.
Dennis. That's a Dennis.
I feel like that's Teresa.
I feel like it's Teresa, too.
I do, well.
I'm going Teresa.
You're from Wisconsin.
Yes.
Yeah, see? Give it up right there.
It's not me.
Okay, it's Dennis.
Okay, it's Dennis.
Okay, who is it? Fess up. Oh, it's me.
Oh, it's Ann.
Forgot you put one in there.
Recognized the hand writing because I couldn't read it. I have a pilot's license.
Dennis.
I don't know.
That's David. David. David?
Is it Teresa?
Yeah, could be Teresa.
Oh, you were in the airport.
Yeah. Birdie laying down.
I'll recycle some of the younger ones.
Teresa's.
Is that your final answer?
Yep.
It's not me.
It's Dennis.
I was right.
Excellent.
You were in there.
Once you have it, you have it.
What's less than be floating?
Probably 10 years ago.
Do there, are there like different ratings? Is it like...
We should buy one.
Like instrument or...
People fishing faster.
Look with that.
Get your Calgary quicker.
The model T of airplanes still ties you underground, and you can't work on it. It's just ridiculously.
You guys can really, if you're learning to fly...
You gotta keep your medical up, though.
There you go.
You really have to self-report if there's any issues, but that's about it, yeah. Even the small Cessnas are that expensive?
That's incredible.
Old, it's just because they're terrible though.
How much are they?
Hundred grand. If you get one for a hundred grand, you're doing good.
Yeah, you would be doing good.
You get one of those build your own plane kits? You can do that, and then...
No.
Life is in your hands. Actually, a lot of them do, but it's, because then you can work on it. Other than that, you have to hire a handy mechanic there. Even to change plugs, you gotta hire a mechanic.
Is it expensive per hour? Do you do it by the, you cost it out by the hour and the hour?
Well, if you rent, it's, it's about a hundred and ten, something like that, a hundred dollars an hour.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of like, you know, like, you've got to, you've still got to get to the airport and get from the airport, so it's not like you can go out your back door.
That's very cool, very cool. When I retire, my goal is to own a few hundred acres and farm it.
Travis.
Travis. That's David.
We can see David's... He's got cows in his soul hole. I feel like we're gonna answer, and I mean, it should be pretty easy to narrow it out. It's gotta be Travis. I was gonna go Travis.
Excellent. What kind of farming would you like to do?
I don't know. We'll see what happens with the family farm out in Beanville.
Okay. What's grown out there? What kind of...
Corns, what he means.
Okay.
Cash crop.
I'll come and combine before you get involved.
There you go.
Do you have free land where they can?
He's gonna be free.
Just make sure you grow peas.
We can make a deal, though. I can have some hunting land for him.
That's great. I am traveling to Tanzania later this year to install a solar system at a nursing school.
That's David Fisher.
That's gotta be David.
That's David Fisher.
Very cool, very cool. What's the, what's the backstory on the school? Is it a school you've worked with before?
It is, so, I think you probably all know, I worked for Fairview for a long time and, you know, we can spend another night talking about what's happening with my Fairview, but when Fairview was more active with the medical missions, I went to this hospital about 10 years ago and did quite a bit of work at that time evaluating their, their situation and doing a number of improvements while I was there. Subsequently, we shipped a bunch of equipment over there, and the nursing school that's affiliated with this hospital has been growing. One of the problems is the utilities there suck and power there goes out half a dozen times a day. The hospital does okay because it's actually got a hydroelectric power system onsite that is pretty reliable and also the normal emergency generator that hospitals have. Nursing school's got nothing, and so, a couple of years ago, I raised some money and we put in a small solar power system there, and it was, I'll say, too successful. So, everything, including the kitchen, has been plugged into it, and now it's, needs some help, and so, I'm gonna go there this fall and repair one of the inverters that has failed and also expand the system quite a bit so we can pick up some, the whole school and a couple of the dorms.
That's very cool.
Really cool. It's cost funds on that day.
Yeah, so, kind of a neat project, and I am squeezing some money out of my old employer to pay for the equipment.
Okay. How long will that take?
I'm gonna be there for three weeks, so I will be missing a meeting, and I don't know that I'll be able to call in for that one.
It's all in good time.
I sure hope not. Literally.
You wanna install an internet?
What's the cost of something like that, David?
The, the system we're putting in, about 13 million Tanzanian shillings.
Okay, what's that, US?
About four bucks. No. No, about $10,000.
Okay. That's great. Very, very good. All right, last but not least, scuba diving.
That's one one last something.
Where do you like to scuba dive?
I haven't been in quite a while, but my favorite place was Guam.
Oh, wow, okay.
It was really cool.
What is it about there? The water is warm or...
Warm, crystal clear, just like tons of fish and coral, and it's just awesome.
Sharks.
Sharks. That's great.
Just goes one faster than the other guy.
Well, these are great. Thank you all for doing this. Got souvenirs here, you can collect them afterward. Great. Well, I don't know how much of a background you need about me. When I, I'll just say just a word or two about me and then League of Minnesota Cities, and then we can get on to what you would like to cover tonight so that we can set some goals for tonight. I practiced law years ago in Oregon, and our law firm did similarly what I think your city's attorneys have done. We were a private law firm, but we were city attorneys for five of the suburbs around Portland, so I worked with the city councils and planning commissions and with staff. I was liaison to the police departments in a couple of the cities and stuff, so really enjoyed that. And then in the private side, we did land use, real estate development, and that kind of stuff. So, that's a little bit of my background. My dad was a developer, so when I was done with school, he cut me loose on a foreman who didn't care who I was, and I apprenticed with him for about eight or nine months. Learned everything from shoveling gravel at the bottom of a commercial building up to electrical stuff, and that's what got me interested in doing the house stuff, is I don't know what I'm doing, but I'm not afraid, so I get in there and I, and I do what I can. And then came here to teach at Hamlin, and my area is in business and public administration and nonprofit management, so I work with folks like you and folks in nonprofits and stuff. And I've worked with Amy Gorle for many years. I don't know if Amy's actually met with the group or not.
I don't think so, nope.
Okay, so Amy was the first contact with League of Minnesota Cities, and she's doing a conference presentation this evening, so she asked if I would step in. So, I just appreciate the chance to work with folks like you. The league is not something that existed in Oregon in exactly the same way, and one of the things that I appreciate about it is that it really wants to be a resource to all the cities in Minnesota. Have you worked with the league before? Are you familiar with some of what it does and stuff? Yeah. So, and one of the things that I appreciate about it is that it really understands that every city is unique, every community is different, but there are certain common issues in terms of how do you manage sort of preserving the character of, character of a community while the state is growing, the population is growing and people are moving? I mean, that's, these are normal tensions that a lot of communities face. How do elected officials and professional staff partner effectively so they can support each other's success? How, how do you manage setting priorities when you have, you know, you have constituencies, but you also have sort of on-the-ground insights from this, through the services you provide? All these different things are sort of, I don't want to call them common issues, but you see them in a lot of places, and I just, I appreciate the chance to work with folks like you because you're, you're the ones who are making it all happen, and so I feel like I'm fortunate that I get to be here. So, anyway, that's a little bit about my, that's my background, and I, I particularly prefer working with public groups. I mean, I'm not against working with private businesses, they're hugely important, but I just sort of enjoy the public side of things. So, one of the things that sort of came up, you've seen the agenda, this is tentative. What sort of surfaced were a couple of things. One is just a quick check-in on what would be a sort of measures of success for this evening. What would you like to see us accomplish so when you go home at the end of the meeting, you feel like this was time well spent? Being realistic about what can be done in any one meeting, but also sort of helping you move in a direction that you all would find helpful. Then there were sort of two kind of clusters of things that came up in the conversations that I had and the survey kind of information, and thanks for those who were able to respond. One is to identify priorities, and it may be just for the next year. I mean, it's up to you how you want to pitch it, at what level, but identify some needs and priorities, and I understand that you have a history with dots, so I made a point of bringing dots, if you want to use dots.
I'm sure it's a good history.
You're destined to relive the dot, the dot thing. But then, after hopefully identifying some priorities, then having a conversation about how the administrative and professional staff and the elected officials can support each other sort of in a partnership so that, so that those, everyone can move the city in a direction that pulls in, in a way that you all want. So, that's, I know that's a kind of a high-level overview, but let me just stop there. Does that sound like how you would like to spend your time tonight, or have I missed something entirely?
It feels good.
So far, so good? Okay. I mean, I'm happy to be flexible. I'm here to, to work with all of you and what you need. You know, don't, don't humor me. I'm here to, I'm here to work with all of you. So, if, if that's the case, then maybe we can take just a couple of minutes. What would you see as a successful outcome, although it's always dangerous when the facilitator stands? What would you see as a successful outcome? Although it's always dangerous when the facilitator stands up, right? Means it's flip chart time, right? What would you, what would you see as a good, a good step forward from tonight?
We have some.
Sorry?
We have some, a pretty good idea of, a pretty good agreement on two to three goals.
Okay. On two or three goals. And if I can just ask follow-up, as you think about the goals, you're thinking about for the next year or a little bit further out?
Probably the next two years.
Okay, okay.
For the next year or two, okay. Thanks.
Other things that would, you'd find this was an evening well-spent in addition to the great dinner. And the good guessing game.
I mentioned before when we first started, but I agree with the goals. That's a main objective of tonight's meeting is to get to goals. So, I will put another check one by that. I don't know what, two or three goals or whatever the goals or objectives are of the council, but a thing for me is to be able to have good understanding between all groups in the, in the pack here of the team and the partnership that we all understand what each other's roles are and what, you know, objectives we're looking for. Cause as everyone may be aware that everyone has different objectives when they are coming here and working. They either focus on public works or police or admin or fire or whatever. And then council's goals are, you know, is it saving money? Is it, you know, is it having the best services? Is it providing better parks? Is it whatever it is? I just want everyone to have a better understanding of everyone's roles so that we can be better partners.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
I think it'd be helpful, you know, the whole purpose of the meeting was to kind of let go of the past and move forward. So, actually do that. Like, spend a lot of time, council meetings, time about the past this, the past that. And I think it'd be good to kind of, if it's relevant to the conversation, great, but for the purpose of just calling people out doesn't do any good. So, I think just letting go of the past and moving forward and trying to put our best foot forward as we move as a group.
So, a sense of looking forward. If I can just offer, that's, that's another kind of common thing that I notice. Communities have history and history matters because it helps kind of form the culture and the feel of why we live where we live. And how do we honor that and not be held back by it? You know, it's not either or. It can be both. There are ways to kind of honor it, but also to be able to look to the future, so.
It, yeah. And it should be both because it gets back to the old adage. If you don't pay attention to what's happened in the past, you will repeat it.
Exactly, right, right.
So, that's why history can be important.
Yeah, so you don't wanna ignore it. You don't wanna deny it, but you also don't wanna be a prisoner to it.
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Great.
Other, other goals or ways that you would feel like, yeah, this was an evening well-spent? I mean, three is fine. It's a, it's a good list.
I'd figure communication between staff and council.
Okay.
How to better, how we can better it without.
Okay.
Getting trapped by the past.
I wouldn't say that. I would say just better communication that we're not, we're not sending stuff and not receiving responses back or.
Communication improvements.
Or maybe even like open meeting law overview. Make sure we're not violating open meeting law, but we're able to still be able to have some back and forth and communicate.
Okay. So, I'm hearing a couple of things that are related. One is, and again, this, I don't know if it's useful for me to say when things are common, but this is another common one, is what, every community's, every government's different. What's the right balance for communication so that everyone feels like?
Their voice will be heard.
They're being heard, they're being considered, but they're not being overwhelmed, you know, sort of. And every, every community's got its own balance, so.
That's my, where I'm kind of at too is, say, we all can agree that we wanna communicate better, but what does that look like?
Okay, yeah.
Actually, to David's point, that's why I'm, it's been kind of a pet peeve of mine. I think if you have communication that is intended for communication, then that should be pretty much wide open. But once you start deviating and start forming decisions, opinions, you may be legal for the open meeting law, but you are wrong.
And that goes back to Amy's comment. I think what you were noticing, yeah, there are, there are legal frameworks. And this is, I mean, I don't wanna call it a tension, but it is sort of balancing point.
Yes.
There's a certain, I mean, I'm speaking to experts. There's a certain amount of communication which is appropriate and then there's a certain point at which you're starting to move towards something where you need to have notice and opportunity and so, sort of figuring out where that boundary works for all of you, so, yeah. So, under communication, I'll just put sort of the informal slash formal communication, sort of where is that? Is that capture kind of what we're saying? Informal. And by formal, I mean that's when, that's when the open meetings laws stuff kick in and you have to start being aware of when you need to notice things. I mean, we have, not to go down a rabbit hole, but we have something on campus happening right now where faculty are wanting to get together, but at a certain point, you have to call a meeting and notice. And people go, well, what if we go to the bar? Well, are you going to the bar to have a drink or are you going to the bar to make a decision? You know, everyone wants to go to the bar, at least in our group, but, yeah, so kind of figuring that stuff out. Okay.
Can I have communication styles to that? It's like, for example, you know, Zach informed me that getting email backs and yep, I got this or thanks, even if there's no extra content is helpful for the staff. But in the corporate world where I have spent my career, that's a no-no. Like, you don't just reply back, thanks, one word emails, things like that. You don't, you don't do that. So, until I was told that, I would never have known that that's what staff wanted. So, again, it's not, that one's right or wrong. It's just different styles in general and trying to bridge that so that way, because it's easy for me to reply back, thanks, but it doesn't, I would never know that if someone didn't tell me.
Right, so kind of clarifying what's, what's the practice that you'd let, that you all would find works for you here? Yeah, that makes good sense. Okay, okay.
For me, it would be staff and council getting on the same page.
Okay. Around policy or around other things?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use this as a prime example. And please, Marty, don't take this. Marty's the most.
Much money was in the pool.
You're the most excited about this whole, the water trail thing?
Yep.
And, I mean, that plan is gorgeous. It's beautiful. However, I would see an Andrews Park in Dayton before I see that, especially at four or five million bucks. That's me personally. To me, more people are gonna get more use out of that park than that water trail. Now, if all of a sudden the government comes and says eighty-twenty, we'll pay for eighty-twenty, then maybe we can find the million bucks, but.
And that's why I'm pushing so hard for the grant funding and stuff on that and that's why I'm getting to these meetings to find that. And that's why I wanted the plan adopted, well, not adopted, accepted, so we could actually get on these other groups and agencies, CIP lists. So, I'm not expecting the city of Dayton to pay four million dollars for any part of this out of their own pocket. Maybe across the board, there may be some input in there, but I'm not expecting it all to be city-funded. The idea is to get other cities to fund it, National Park Service, DNR, Three Rivers Park District. And the majority of that Gooding Park area will be funded by Three Rivers Park.
Absolutely, it's their, it's their work.
So, I think we are kind of on the same page with that.
Okay, it probably boils down to when we have a direction that we're going. And we see this on council too and on staff, when there's a, a problem with that direction, it'd be nice if that was kind of out in the open. And I, you know, we, we don't like to be, or be hindered by history, but that's being hindered by history. So, things like that. It's, it's when there's a clear direction deviation, but not an open deviation or not a, it's frustrating.
And so, if I can clarify, not to go down a rabbit hole on this, but when, so, and tell me if you have a different vision, if it's not you, but all of you collectively, the council is the policymaking body. You're setting the direction, setting the priorities for the city and then the staff are the professionals who interpret and implement the, those directions. And what I'm hearing you say is that sometimes issues come up and I don't know whether sometimes those are external challenges or whether they may be internal challenges. And then how to sort that stuff out? Is that, am I missing something or is that?
Oh, maybe that's some of it. I, I just don't wanna see us get into a situation where things are happening and it's very clear that there's a deviation between the two happening.
Okay, okay.
Or, or in that prime example, in that prime example, there's a hundred thousand dollar grant that, that you're a hundred percent, well, ninety-nine and a half percent are probably gonna get.
Yeah.
Now, what I don't wanna see is, okay, we're gonna get that grant, but we gotta buy something. I wanna see all that grant money upfront before we spend a nickel. That's what I personally would rather see. Because I would drive, in my personal opinion, I think there's more people in this city that would get more use out of an Andrews Park or a, like a St. Michael's Central Park than floating down the river. So, that's just me personally.
So, is this speaking to transparency about kind of all of the issues that come up?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah. And it's not that anyone's necessarily, it's not that anyone's necessarily trying to hide something.
Right.
It's just being proactive. It's kind of being, okay, what do we need to share so that the right decision-makers can be making the right decisions? Yes, no?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, I've only been here for a few months. I've only worked with Zach and just trying to look forward. I don't feel like I've ever had an issue where things aren't transparent, so maybe it comes from.
You're in a better seat.
I will, I will say that I think.
From the past?
Right.
Have vastly improved.
Okay.
I think.
I, I just, I wanna make sure I'm not, like, I'm not, I feel like I'm gonna miss anything, but I feel like I'm missing something in this conversation. Which is why I'm, I'm kind of like, okay, I don't, I guess I don't get it, but I'm not you and people interpret things differently. That's why I'm asking.
This is the history bag.
Well, and, well.
But those people don't hear anymore either, right? So, like, some of that baggage, it's good to remember, so we don't repeat it, but at the same time, like.
I appreciate you naming that because that's actually very helpful. A lot of times, communities have an experience that is not good. It can be damaging to relationships or what other. And then new people come in and there's a turnover, but that history kind of sometimes stays with people. And so, how to, how to work through it?
There's always been a hidden agenda and as long as we can get rid of that hidden agenda, that's fine.
Maybe I can make it a hypothetical example? Cause I don't think we have this going on right now.
No.
Okay, but to just use the, the two that are, that are kind of out there.
Yeah.
To say, alright, if it were the council's direction that we wanna pursue an Andrews Park kind of a thing, that's, that's our wishes. We, we're not there, but that's the planning we wanna do. That's the overall, you know, the long-term plan that we were, we're after. But in the background, the majority of the work is being done to fund the water trail.
Okay.
And so, we've got, we've got this disparate paths going on.
Okay.
And what is, there isn't really work going on on this. There's work going on on that. That's what we don't wanna have happening. And it's not. In my experience, I've been on the council for a year and a half now and I haven't, I haven't seen this happening. But I believe it has in the past.
Okay. That's, that's excellent. I mean, I'm the outsider. That's a helpful example. I appreciate that. Cause what that speaks to, and I think that's what you were saying, just get it out in the open. Let's just put it on the table and then the right decision-makers will make the decisions and everyone will move forward. I mean, that sounds simple, but, okay, yeah. And it also sounds like that may not be the experience today, but there's still some, maybe some memories of that having happened in the past. And just how to be careful so that doesn't, so you build the trust and the communication so it doesn't continue to be an issue or concerning. So, I'll just put transparency as a piece.
Can I just say something on transparency? Since I've been doing this job, that's been my, one of the number-one goals. There's two goals that I really started with, with being transparent with the council and being able to justify any purchases and anything like that and bring it to the council and present it that way. The other thing that I was looking at was trying to raise the public awareness of what the Public Works Department was about. There was this big notion that all we did was mow a bit of grass, snowplow and lean on shovels in the summer. So, that was one of the biggest things. So, we upped our game with, you know, responding to residents and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, the key thing for me is I've always aimed to be transparent with you guys. And I, if I'm not doing that, I'd like to know that that's not being, it's not being received that way because it's one of my goals to be that person and be transparent with you guys, with my coworkers and with the residents here.
And I think that's all of us, any department head is, wanna be transparent with council and have that feeling that you guys are receiving it that way. And if we're not being that way, we need to know that so we can.
And I think there's a cutoff. There's some, you know, day-to-day things that I won't deal with it, but if there's some bigger things, then, then we communicate. And that's, you know, I don't want to burden you with every little day-to-day deal that I had.
You guaranteed an email if there's a big incident.
Comes down to, we don't even know if Johnny or Suzie are late, but we wanna know if a pump stops working and that's that right balance.
And if it's something that you're gonna get calls from residents about, I, I, then I give you the heads up that that, you know, be aware, this is what's happening.
See, residents press is my big thing. If I know the residents are gonna be calling me about an incident or the press is gonna be calling, I always make sure you guys are aware.
Yeah.
So, is open communication already?
Yeah, I'm always.
I would say that's something we can, transparency or whatever, open, honest communication between any side.
Communication, so all we had under this open and honest.
Yeah, and that's.
And it sounds like it's happening today, but it just, to move forward, that we want to continue to have that moving forward is that open and honest communication both ways.
Yeah.
That staff to council and council to staff.
It's a two-way street.
Oh, for sure.
But then also the content, the context drives the behavior. So, I mean, if we're talking about something, but we don't talk about it fully, you leave people to assume things. And I brought this up yesterday, that when we assume things, we tend to lead ourselves down the wrong path. So, if we have something in the past that has stricken something, that does drive a decision, should let the group know about something like that because to mine and Matt's point is like, we're fresh. We don't have the history that's due, so we would like the context a little bit more so we can understand why it drives that behavior or that decision.
And another piece that I'm hearing from the comments that you're making and maybe it's, I think it's a fair assumption. You're all here because you wanna do the right thing. You all care about Dayton. And your roles may be different. It may be a professional administrative role. It may be an elective role, but you all care. And then the question, so it, to the degree that there's comfort with that, then it's a how do we reinforce the alignment? And that's more of a how kind of piece, how to communicate and stuff, yeah. Okay, well, so, I can't read my own writing. I couldn't even read my own card. But I think what I wrote is, agreement on two or three goals for either this year or the next year. Understanding the roles and objectives and I, I interpret this, tell me if I'm wrong. The roles include sort of council roles, department head role, administrative and elective roles. This may be as much a reminder as a to-do and that is an orientation that sort of maybe fits with the fresh start sort of label. And that is, every community has a history and we wanna acknowledge and honor the history, but not be burdened by it. And to be able to think about how do we move forward, not we, you, but I'm here now. So, that's the looking forward piece. Should I do we or you?
We, you're good.
We's good, yeah.
I don't wanna be pretentious. I mean, I've been here a couple of times driving around. I like it here. And then the communication, especially between council and staff, what does it look like? Some of the values that relate to that are open and honest, transparent, kind of, let's get all the information out so that there's a trust that no one's trying to do something, whether on purpose or not, that may not be open and out there. Recognizing that because you're a public body, that there is a boundary between what is appropriate informal communication and the point at which open meetings laws kick in. There's notice and various things, just sort of remembering that. And then within the, under. And then within the underneath communication, recognizing, as you were saying, every organization communicates differently. Like, we had a, our former dean in where I teach, if you don't put it in an email, she doesn't, she didn't hear it. Our current dean, she doesn't like reading emails. She likes to walk, she walks the halls. She doesn't haunt us, but she walks the halls. So, you know, they're, they're just different ways and, and, and like you're saying, there's no right or wrong. It's just sort of you deciding what works best for all of you, if I understand that correctly. And then the council and the staff being on the same page. I think that relates to the transparency. And also recognizing that you each have different roles for the city to be functioning as well as it can be. And the council's role in terms of setting the direction and the policy and so on is a complementary to and distinct from the role that the professional staff does to carry out, to carry out the directions and the transparency. So is that a fair summary of what we've covered so far? I mean, it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a mix of kind of what's success tonight and then some value statements, which is fine. But what I take from this is kind of two buckets. One is the planning piece. What priorities do you want to set for whether it's the next year or a year and a half? And then secondly, when it gets to beginning to move forward on that, how can the staff and the council work even more effectively together? I don't know if that, is that ring correct? Yes? I want to see if I'm on your page. So far, so good. So it's a little after six. I propose we start with the goal setting. Is that okay?
Sure.
And then maybe we take a break. I don't know if you want to take a break now, if anyone has to run down the hall or anything. But we, we do some goal setting and then we turn to kind of the, the how to implement stuff, which we'll get into the communication and no, please don't send me eleven emails in an hour. But these are the kinds of emails I really do want to see, you know, that kind of stuff. Does that make sense? Okay. So what has and has not worked with you before about identifying priorities?
The dots have not worked.
No dots.
I spent twenty minutes cutting out my little dot.
Are you sure?
I want to preface this. I told ten no dots. I told them no dots.
Zach actually warned me about the dots.
No dots.
So what's the first thing I did? I grabbed my dots.
That's right.
We don't have to do that. We don't have to.
Have we done this in the?
The red dog window?
We'll put, you know, four hundred and eighteen goals down and then we get dots. And if somebody really wants this goal, well, they're not going to.
That's correct.
And, or we end up with out of the four hundred and eighteen, three hundred and goals. So it's, I mean, you know what, it, it's not an easy task to have a group.
Yeah.
Come up with common goals.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I brought them just in case. I'm not going to try and sell them to you. I'm not, I'm not a dot salesperson.
Yeah, I don't know the mechanism is important. It's what's important is, is it's difficult to, to, to get, you know. It's difficult to get.
Right.
You were down in Lakeville before you came here, weren't you?
Who, me? Oh, really doing that down there? I don't live too far. I'm in, I'm in Mendota Heights.
Blaine fixes nothing.
So one other quick question. Is your practice that everyone kind of sets priorities together? Or is, is it like the department heads kind of talk about what's, what's coming up in the various areas and then the council folks have a separate conversation? What, what have you done? What works for you?
It's messy because if you have, say, you've got five goals and one is painfully easy to implement, it takes a day. Do you really want that as the lowest priority and ship it out for three years? So you have that kind of an issue where, and I think staff helps with that, where they look at these goals and they say, this is a no-brainer, easy to do, boom, 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 and we can knock these out.
Great.
But that's also hard to zero on.
So can I propose something since I've been thinking about this? Go for it. I think I, I look at it in two different sections, which is like, what do we need to fix now? Maybe that's the low-hanging fruit, the stuff that's like, this is the stuff that we can get. And then what is our goal for two, three, four years down the road? It's like Andrews Park, having to complete Andrews Park maybe ten years down the road. But that may be a goal that then is that more like high-reaching fruit that we're working towards. Because that takes a lot of planning and work today to make sure that gets done in the future with other things where it's like, we can just get those done today. Let's fix the stuff we got to get done today and look at what is further out and kind of break it into two different categories. So more short-term planning, a long-term plan.
Well, if we can decide that those are easy to, in the past, we.
Yeah, I've only been around for one, really. And that was the first thing we did with the dots. It didn't work.
I'm going to turn it over so you don't see my dots.
No, fantastic.
I'm going to deny that I brought dots.
I don't know what really happened before, pre.
And before was also dots.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what great way to get goals and objectives. I think it's maybe doing our overall arching, maybe a big objective goal. I think that's kind of what the strategic plan was that we kind of, kind of adopted, not adopted, I don't know, two years ago, is to kind of get big picture goals. But the small, minute kind of day-to-day things we can get done are things that staff can suggest and say, and then council could say, oh yeah, that works. But I don't know if we want council saying, we want an Andrews Park. It might be, we want to focus on parks. And one of the things might be in the next one to two years, it might be, okay, let's start to get a, a community sports complex land or something. That might be step number one. And once we get that step done, then we can cross off the list and then move to the next objective, which might be the plan. But the overall, the goal is to have more, better, you know, parks in general. So that might mean multiple things, but I think that's where, at least I struggle with goal setting is what is the goal that the council sets? And that's, you know, everyone's goal can be either small or can be large, but that's where it gets tough, so.
Well, so, so one way to move forward, and again, I want to be responsive to what has worked for you all in the past, kind of picking up on your idea. We could just, you know, let, we've got two flip charts on two parts of the room. So how about, you know, one of the flip charts is immediate, immediate things that, things that need immediate attention. And then we can talk about it. They, maybe they get moved across or maybe they get crossed off, but at least as a starting point. And then what you think may be larger or slightly longer-term goals go on the other list. And just because you write it there, it doesn't mean that it's stuck there. Things can move around. But to do some initial sorting, would that be useful? Yes, no? Or been there, done that?
Well, initial sorting after we come up with the list.
I'm thinking that, what I'm thinking is you all can just vote with your feet. If, if we just label this one immediate, immediate issues and then these are mid to long-term goals. You can decide individually where they go and then have a conversation. No, this one needs to move over there or yeah, that's important, but let's take it off altogether. But at least there's a first cut. I don't know. Are you game? Does that make sense?
I know. This feels a little bit like rehashing the CIP a little bit because we've got long-term goals out, identified out in there in ten years. Is that what we're trying to rehash that a little bit here or?
I mean, I think you would agree that, you know, goals that were set four years ago probably are, are, are not.
Yeah.
Not those that.
And I, I think that's, I don't know if that's part of what we're trying to achieve here is, because when a different council comes in, they bring different things in. And then our priorities get changed.
Yep, that's the way it works.
That's why I think you almost need to do up to like two years, you know, the first year, second year. When you get out past the three, four years, they kind of tail off, just like the CIP. It's anything past four years is kind of, you don't really.
It could fluctuate, yeah.
Yeah, because then you lose your continuity. You might be planning something and by the time you get it to build out or something, then the new council says, well, I'm not really sure we want to do that, or that's not the direction we want to go on. So I think that, that is, the continuity aspect is the difficult part. And I think Paul may be correct. They just maybe have some more short-term goals that we can achieve in two, four years, whatever.
So is it better to just create one list of goals as a group and then as we're talking through them, say,
That's fine.
More or less than two years and kind of label them and then go from there?
I think so. I think that's where I'd recommend it.
Well, I got three.
I got five years left, so if you want to go five years.
Well, there it is again. Three years left, so I'm happy to hear you.
Four years, three hundred days. Minus my sick time.
Oh, yeah, here we go.
Well, I do five-year goals. I've time.
So what do you want to do with the 2021 comprehensive plan? Do you want to make any reference to it or do you want to start clean? In terms of the conversation tonight?
It's a compound of goals.
That's the strategic plan.
This is the strategic plan, sorry.
I would say those were put together without a whole lot of council input. I think a lot of that was driven by staff because of all the red dots, green dots.
Yeah, I think that was.
I don't know who would think of bringing red dots and green dots.
I think that was an attempt to make sense of all of that stuff. And I think that was.
I think there was a separate issue going on.
I think, I think maybe we could just draw a line in the sand under that.
I think we do.
All right.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to your, to your point, the, the South Water system. Gone. And that was the new council that came in. This is dumb. At least that was, that was, so you, we will have some of that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's good to know now. So when we're looking at the CIP for next year, we can, we can have some of those things already moved. So we don't have to have the discussion of South Water system is a good example of that. That's basically pushed out ten years. It could happen next time.
Yeah. So, so just to be clear, in terms of what we're going to do now, what I'm hearing is this is like, this is a fresh start. You're going to start a new list. You're not going to sort of build off of an old, an old plan.
There might be something on the old.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's not off limits, but just, we don't, we don't kind of depend on that.
Right, right. We did not update that in twenty-two, just for everyone's reference. We did not update that. We basically just wrote some notes in there, our staff did, said, here's what kind of we did or what the process is, and that's what happened.
I think the majority of the people in the room knew and weren't part of that anyway. So I think this is a good a time to have a fresh start as, as any.
So do you want to?
My time, I think there was a report out on the previous year's accomplishments toward that, but I don't recall us updating it.
We never updated it in twenty-two. It did not happen.
Okay. So in terms of the mechanics, do you want to stretch your feet, get up and jot stuff yourselves on the board? Or do you want me to do it? You've, you've seen, you've seen my handwriting, so I'll let you.
Better than mine.
It's legible.
I'm, I'm happy to do it. Happy to do it. Do you want me to, do you want to just call it out and all?
Doesn't matter. Those are posted. Once we can take those off and put them on the wall. These ones are not. These are just easel footprints.
In your office, then?
Yeah, that'd be great. I had it up there for a long time. I'll tell you.
Let me get rid of this and put it on the wall.
Oh, yes.
I got scolded to take it down. Remember that?
Quickly for me. Are we just going to call out and you're going to write it down or what do we do?
Well, that's, that's my question. I'm happy to write it down. You good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Should I use a thicker pen?
Whatever one you want.
All right.
Transparency.
So just call it out and I won't do a whole lot of filtering?
You mean like public transportation or?
Roads.
So, okay, so transportation, roads.
So different than public transportation.
Public is like buses, trains.
Yeah.
So are you listing roads and city buses separately?
There is no city buses.
You're all with city buses.
There is no city buses.
That's, that's the downside of being outside. I don't know which one is.
As soon as he said yes, I was like, wait a minute, what? I had to take a double take too. I'd like a question on roads because roads is very broad. Is it planning roads or is it building roads? Is it repairing roads? It is, that's my question.
Yes.
If I was all three, that's great. I just want to make sure that's.
I think all three, but I mean, planning for sure.
So it'd be transportation and then it would be road repair, new roads.
Planning.
Planning.
Probably planning first.
Yeah, I think so.
I see our transportation plan update that is in the works.
Yep.
And put that thing to bed, please.
Please.
Please. But then to Paul's point, we also have a, a road condition study going on.
That's going to answer that.
Right. We want to, we want to get that, the results of that. I mean, that's underway or will be. But we wanted to get the results of that and then use those results, right, to build our road maintenance budget.
Payment management plan.
So we get something out of that study.
I've got planning repairs and I made a reference to the study that's going on.
And then. So we have a study for repairs and we have a study.
Payment management funding.
Yeah, that goes under the study, yeah.
Then I'm going to say land use.
Okay.
That has to be in a separate one.
That's a separate deal.
He's going through his three.
Yeah, so we got, we got two, two of threes.
Scott, so when you say land use, is this like comp plan stuff or, okay?
Where are you going to keep your hunting spot? That's my question.
That's on the land use.
So we've got, we've got roads and transportation that's planning, including the study and then repairs. Is there a separate study on repairs? And then, and then.
That's payment and management.
Yeah, that all goes together.
My apologies if my words garble.
We understand it. I think we're good.
That's what matters. That's why I can live in a fog, as long as you guys are clear. And then, and then land use, the comprehensive plan and I assume sort of subsets of that, other issues.
Then I got amenities.
Amenities. And what does that mean?
Water park.
You want to?
You're, Teresa, your area, right?
Yeah.
Activities, that kind of stuff, okay.
Is that what you're thinking, Scott? Is that what you're thinking when you say amenities?
Well, the activities, amenities, I mean, that's all going to kind of go together.
Splash paint.
What do you think you want to say amenities?
What is an amenity?
That's a very broad.
What, what's that?
I do believe, I do believe that we should be planning for ten years from now for a some sort of a park.
Okay.
So you're thinking city park?
With a few ball fields, soccer fields, um.
Some complex.
Some sort of something. I mean, no one.
So I put as an example, a park.
Like an Andrews Park.
It could be other things, but yeah, okay.
Did you want to add your splash paint underneath that?
Let's not get too.
Okay, okay. Dirt, don't be. So we got, we got one, two, three. Do we have a four?
We're fixing the core.
And sit, when you mean core as in?
So we've got a police department that at times has one officer on, which is not great. I think Public Works is doing okay. We have some water issues, like water treatment that need a lot of help. And it's coming eventually, so I hear. And, uh, no, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, the fire department, we have, we first time we have a full-time fire chief and the fire, finding things in the fire department that need help and adjustment and we have a fire concern.
So when you say core, you mean the core services?
Like infrastructure.
Yep.
Infrastructure.
Okay. And I would agree with Scott on roads. We've got water issues all over the city.
And we're not calling it DH anymore.
He gets mad when I call it DH.
I don't care what you call it.
Because that's kind of.
That's Hennepin County.
We're in Hennepin County. It's fine.
So.
I don't care what you call it.
Didn't mean to us.
We do cross over.
Small chunk in the right.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Some of these things like land uses got some significant topics under it that I would almost call equivalent goals, so.
Do you want to separate them out? I can, I can draw an arrow and we can build it out.
You can expand on.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, so land use, we've, we have this concept of an RE area that we have not fleshed out at all. And that's going to be a significant.
I would call it RE zoning. That's what I would call it.
Okay.
Something estates, residential estates.
That's what I thought.
Okay, means rural estates.
These are large parcels, right.
We've been going to do that for about eight months, nine months.
And we know that this, this transportation plan amendment is going to drive our current, the current land use where, where, so we moved the road where we planned on. So the land use that's in that area doesn't fit where the road's at, at all.
Okay.
So, you know, that's going to be a significant effort in there.
Right. So it's the interconnection between actually the road priority and the land use and zoning.
It ends up being a, one, one feeds off the other one.
Yep.
I still think we should look at the forty, we have a forty-acre rule. You're probably familiar with those, right? Minimum lot size?
Yep.
I still think we should be looking at that in some areas.
Looking at it to reduce it or to increase it?
Somehow deal with it.
Get rid of it.
Well.
Or, or, or something.
Yeah.
That's been on the agenda for.
So if I just say revisit it, that, that'll be enough?
Isn't that the egg clustering?
It's unclear which can even get, okay?
The problem is that went in a different direction than I think the majority of the council wanted it to go. And so we just said, it's gone.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yep. Okay.
Put, put egg cluster next to that just for my.
What cluster?
Egg clustering.
Okay, yep.
So you're saying that people, rather than clustering, you're thinking the council is wanting more, if somebody wanted this parcel of forty acre off into ten acre chunks, the houses could go wherever they wanted.
Not wherever, but what I was, what I think, at least my intent was, was the, the Met Council puts out a, a, a paper on this, how to do this properly. And we went over and above that and decided we were going to cluster residences. And so the whole thing was wrapped around that. And so when we got that, I just threw my hands and said, here we go again.
So it'd be like all the houses were up close to each other and then they had property in the back.
Giant outlaw. Except they did, only one of the properties owned all the rest.
Oh, okay.
So, it just, it just.
So similar, there's a property, I think, on One Twenty-Fifth currently, that has the house all the way in the back of the property, and then in the front of it, there's, what's it called, Stone Hearth Ridge, or something? Is that kind of what you're talking about, where you put the houses densely together in front of it, but you still have?
That was the proposal.
Okay.
But it, it doesn't solve the issue.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and, you know, that, and that is also, I think, an example of the council was, was going this way, and, and all of a sudden we found out that the proposal was over here, and we just said, we're, we're done.
True.
So I went in the ditch, and, yeah, so anyways.
So other, other things related to land use, we've got the RE zoning, the forty acre rule, and the egg cluster.
I think that we impact the staging plan when we do these other things.
Stadium plan?
Stadium.
Oh, staging plan, sorry.
Yep.
I thought they already had enough stadiums.
We do.
So that would go along with land use, I agree, so at the same time we're doing land use, we will also do an adjustment to staging to make sure that those match each other.
Okay, staging plan, good. Other things on this, or move on to a number five?
That's about enough till December.
Well, do I have a longer term one that doesn't relate to any of this?
Um, well, I'll, I'll write it, how about if I write it down on this checkered one?
Yeah, or we can stay on this theme if there's more to it.
Whatever, just so we remember, we don't lose it, so.
So I, I don't know if anybody beyond me has an interest in, in revisiting this, but I would like us to take a look at bringing back some form of the Public Safety Commission.
Okay. Why don't I just put it on the list, and then when you set priorities, you can move it around, is that okay?
Yeah. We had one, and, you know, it didn't, didn't function well, it didn't have a clear charter, we worked on kind of a random stuff, I was on it, and.
Didn't have much of a charter at all.
And so it, you know, it didn't have a purpose, and so I think it was, you know, it was probably the right thing to, to put it on hold, but I think we've grown as a community, we've got a lot more diversity, and I think I need to have more public engagement around public safety kinds of stuff. And I don't have a clear vision in what this looks like, but I think it's something that we ought to explore bringing back.
Okay, great.
So because I wasn't here then, can you help fill me in on kind of what was the original, like, what was the focus, or what would be the focus?
There wasn't any focus to it.
Okay.
Um, we, we worked real hard on thinking about what kinds of locks to put on the, the public building doors. Uh, we thought about what kind of video system we might bring into play here, I don't know, Dennis, do you remember?
Yeah.
We had a big controversy about whether or not to allow ATVs on city streets. I, you know, I don't, I don't know, it was, it was unclear what we were supposed to do, that's the honest truth, and so it was a little frustrating to, to be on, but.
Do you have an idea of what you think, an idea, and this is not me, I just don't know, so I'm just asking, what they could do? Like, I know clearly didn't work on the past, but do you have an idea of maybe what they could work towards going, if we were to do something like that at all, or? Anyone?
Yeah, what would be their goal, or what would be their intentions?
What would the council ask of them, I guess, is my question.
Their charge.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I do have some thoughts, but I, I don't know that I can articulate it right, right here, but I'm happy to, you know, put together more, I, you know, and I wanna gauge what the interest is on the, on the council, too, if I'm, you know, if I'm, if nobody else cares about it, then, you know, we don't need.
Well, I, I don't think it's a bad thing to bring back, but we do need clear direction, because we can't just be sitting there for two hours and not talk about anything, not get anything accomplished, and.
So about that same time, we've seen parks do similar things, they just hadn't known.
So, so what we're doing now is we're just generating the list of potential goals, and we'll set priorities after the list is kind of complete, it sounds like this is something to be somewhere on the list, and maybe developed a little bit further, but maybe that could be the next step, if that makes sense. So, other goals, we got roads slash transportation, we got the land use with the subsets underneath there.
Can, can, I, I, the land use?
Yeah.
Um, can you also add large, large area development?
Large area plans, you're talking about?
Large area plans.
Yep.
That's, I think that's.
Large area plan?
I think it's a great idea.
I guess, is it, one thing I'm looking for is, would there be anything council goals for public, anything public safety related type deals? I don't know if you guys ever.
I've given some smaller goals, Zach and I have talked, like the adopt a hydrant piece, the, um, I'd like to see us have a plan, or you have a plan, in case there's an officer involved shooting, but with the way the world is today, I think it's good for the city as a whole to have a plan, so we as a council have a set way of how we plan on responding if that becomes something.
Critical, critical incident.
A critical incident plan?
And I think we need to involve citizens in creating that, and then that way we know what we're gonna do, so it's not like, oh crap, we don't know what to do, 'cause it just happened, like, I don't know, it seems better to have a plan than to have nothing, um, then be in front of the camera, have to figure this out as we go, this is, if that were to happen, does not seem like the right way to do it, and so I would definitely like to see that.
Does that capture it?
Critical incident plan slash, um.
I'd say emergency management.
Emergency management?
Emergency management and, uh, active shooter.
Same as if there was a large fire or something happened, I think that's all, or.
Or, heaven forbid. Flooding.
Yeah, there's flooding, or the entire water system goes down, or whatever happens.
Now, are we sandbagging anybody's houses?
We have to pump sewage into the river.
Well, that's what I'm looking for, I can't wait for that day.
That's why I'm asking, for council, are we sandbagging anybody's houses, or are we just doing public infrastructure?
Yeah, so I think having plans for that is the right thing for the city to have in place.
Okay. So we've got six items, is there a seven?
There we go.
Seven, eight?
I've got one, which would be, talking about commissions, I think it'd be a good goal for us to have commissions that had clear goals, and had a way to provide actionable things towards the city, meaning to what they do, I think it's something that not all the, maybe some of the commissions have it, but not all the commissions have really clear goals, what they're working on, and then what, how they can actually contribute, and I think.
And deliverables?
Yeah, so I think that would be good to make sure that.
I think that's been a real frustration with the Parks Commission, you know, um, from their point of view, and from our point of view as well, yeah, from staff point of view, it's been, you know, a struggle to find how they interact with the council, how staff interacts with them, so I think it's really critical to have those goals in place.
And I think that's the same with, well, public safety.
Yep, absolutely.
It was just all.
I think if there was a good deliverable, it would make sense to have it, makes a lot of sense.
Okay, great, so we have these seven, is there an eight?
What did we put on roads, 'cause I actually have.
On roads, um, I didn't, may not have captured it accurately.
Yeah.
Planning and repairs, there's a study with each, pavement management, and then there was a more general transportation, is there missing anything I could always add?
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably under details, but, yeah.
Don't worry about it.
I, I, I would like to see another overall one.
Okay.
I don't know what we would capture, what we would call that, but I would like to see tax increases limited to new development.
So, tax management, how, how would you describe it, though?
Do you want to tax the new homes, is that what you're saying?
No.
No.
That's what it sounds like.
What Dennis is saying is that, there's a certain, there's a certain amount of capacity that's added by new construction.
Yep.
And so, instead of having the more tax burden go on everybody, 'cause it goes on everybody, so instead of focusing on the total tax capacity increase, just focusing on the new development stuff.
So taxes.
To have the limit of tax levy increase to be just the new development, so that everyone's taxes would stay the same essentially next year, roughly.
So if I write taxes in relation to new developments, would that kind of capture the idea?
Yep.
I just, and that, that isn't necessarily, it's just something that I think we, we, I would like us to keep in mind.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a policy discussion to sort out, absolutely, great, and number nine. We can always add, the next step would then be to look at these and see if we can set some priorities.
I think the council set a lot of, a lot of big goals, so being interested if staff has any goals that you think we should be working on that were not on these lists.
Great.
I would say facilities.
Facilities?
Tell me more. It's very broad.
All facility, all city facilities need to be.
Keeping expansion.
Expanded and.
Or even just maintained properly.
Planned out.
Planned, yeah.
Planned out is.
So we're talking, you're talking about city facilities specifically, right?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause there's lots of projects from that impact City Hall and fire that have kind of, you know, like generators and those types of things, it's like, I wanna dump it into something, 'cause I know council had stated that we're gonna move off of this and not put that million dollars into it, it's like, I don't know how much, you know, we start dumping those generators in and all that other stuff, long-term, does it make sense to push it into more infrastructure down the road instead of today?
It doesn't make sense to put money, it's the same conversation we had at CIP last year.
Yeah.
Do we spend one point four million dollars renovating this building?
Right.
Or do we spend five million dollars building a brand-new building that's gonna work for us for the next thirty years, or thirty-five years? No, it's kind of a.
Nice thing about the generator, you can move it if you.
I was just.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, it's a good example.
So it sounds like the city facilities, um, agenda item is a planning discussion, as well as some immediate stuff. Great.
At this point, it's planning.
Yeah, I do think we need to separate the planning for expansion versus, uh, like, current needs.
Okay, so I'll do that, so we've got current needs.
Which would be easier to evaluate if we had a timeframe.
And then we've got future planning.
Of when a new facility might be.
I'm bringing all our old vests and putting them behind the dice.
Hey, that's bulletproof.
Do you put them in, we just put them in front of the podiums, or behind the podiums?
No, they go behind.
Great, other things, we're kind of asking staff, the.
Is, um, and this one's probably gonna end up having things thrown at me, but, branding?
Oh, you didn't go there.
You don't like the toothpaste?
Branding?
Come on.
Why don't, why don't we suspend judgment, we can throw bottles later? So branding, so do you want me to, do you want me to put it on the, I'll put it on the list?
Yeah, I've, I've had enough residents say, what is, what is that, and why?
What is what?
What is the?
Shoot taste.
Yeah.
It's like the greatest.
Live the difference.
You mean just the look of it, or the whole taglines and everything?
And, and those signs, they, they, here we are, well.
We've got rucks.
We're bringing it into the ditch, but.
Live outside.
Live the difference, except live the difference. Three per acre, three per acre, three per acre, that's what we're doing, so.
Okay, so branding, okay?
Right, and, and again, it may get a little priority, but, and it doesn't have to come, here, I'm getting.
Well, I mean, actually, this is a, this is a, a good discussion to have, to try and capture the stuff at least on one list, and then you can set your priorities within the list.
I'm just saying like that one.
We don't have live the difference. And none of the signs we have that put on there, right, it's just the.
Uh, we do go in the front.
We don't have to have live the difference on the signage, no, it's just a.
It's not, it's not that we have to come up with something, it's not like we gotta spend fifty grand on this, all I'm saying is we should look at it.
Before we spend fifty grand on signs, we should look at it.
Well, I, I don't know that we would necessarily have to, we can, for example, we have that now on all our vehicles, as we get new vehicles, we could put, if we did come up with a new brand, we could put that on there then, I don't know that it has to be an event where we fix everything, yeah.
Could be a rolling, a rolling thing.
So when, when one of the park signs go bad, you change it to new.
Yeah, but that's where we're kind of at, at the moment.
We are.
Yeah, and we could put that big sign in at the end and change it.
So I'm hearing this has got some traction, so we wanna keep it on the list.
It doesn't mean.
Yeah. Great, excellent, is there a number eleven? From any of the departments?
I like to say that I appreciate the conversation, so just please say all of the ideas, 'cause there's no way for us to evaluate and help each other all out, without saying those ideas, so I appreciate you bringing that up to ask, 'cause branding is good, it's, might be.
You know, I don't think we have.
I would back us up to that one, to hopefully not go further into the ditch with it, but to not to.
The statement got me, not what you're saying. This is a new one for me, I'm just embracing it.
The live the difference piece, okay, we, we've got that, that's our, that's our logo, because that's, that's what the philosophy has been, that Dayton is, is different, it's unique, it's, it's special, and we live the difference, you know, do we, do we believe that, to Dennis's point? It doesn't look like it with what we've been approving for new developments, it's more like we could change the last word and just say live the same, and then we've got it nailed.
There you go.
Or let make a rule run.
Not so much what's on the sign, but is, is that still our, you know, is that our development philosophy, that's, I guess, what I'm trying to say, is that, have that discussion, let the sign follow.
Right.
What are we trying to achieve, if it's, if it, if that's the development philosophy we wanna, we ultimately are trying to implement here, is the developments that we've been approving, then, okay, you know, then, then we need to change that word, and, and we got it, or if we're trying to live the difference, we're trying to live that philosophy, then we gotta course correct a little bit here.
I mean, that's a really good description of what branding is about, find, finding a way to represent the ideas, more the metaphor for the city, so, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Good, so other things that you wanna add, kind of along what Zach is saying, now is a great opportunity to capture stuff?
So, we haven't really, I don't think we have water covered under anything, though.
No.
Not yet.
I had them to fix the core, but, yeah, that's fine, water was part of it, water really inspired.
So do you want me to add it under fix the core, or do you want me to list it separately?
Let's see what Dan, I think it's, see what the mayor's saying, then we go from there.
Um. We, we have, I just had it nine. But we know we have, um, an Old Village issue we have to deal with, we know we probably have some money coming from a grant, um, we, I, I think I've, I've heard a few of us say that we would like to open up discussions with the Maple Grove on the South Water system, and see what we can do there, as far as getting more buy-in from them. So, that water system is kind of, um, maybe a topic about that water system, a topic about the Old Village water system. We will probably at minimum have some sort of storage.
Yeah.
Figure out how to explain.
Cause they're, aren't they updating, isn't Jason standing?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing a water distribution plan, and this sort of distribution plan, it's not worth the transportation, so I think that once those, those are all in the works now, so, um, once those are completed, then that should give us a better idea.
We have the agreement with Maple Grove for quite some time, and I know he reached out, and they didn't, were not interested in extending that.
Yeah, I know that we talked about it, we had twenty thirty-five is when the whole contract ends, and we've asked them to extend that, or talk about it, and they said, no, we'll do that when it comes time, so.
Well, I think to, to that end, though, if, because, well, nothing's certain yet, but, you know, it, with the potential for a pretty good chunk of state money, um, if we can get beyond the needs in the Old Village, um, with that money, and, and we've got the potential to, um, put a tower in the south, which, long-term, we're gonna need for.
We'll need it to.
Fire protection, or fire suppression.
Pressure capacity, even if we're still on Maple Grove, if we have the discussion with them to say, we'll make the investment of the tower if we can, you know, perpetuate that agreement to use your water, and then we, we've got something to talk about with them.
So far, they don't wanna connect anything to.
In that, in that context.
Yeah.
So if I've captured it right, correctly, the water system is its own piece, I, I heard three pieces, there's the Old Village, there's the south extension, and there is Maple Grove agreement, what, what, if anything, to do with that, and, and at this point, at least as I'm thinking about this, there's a lot to talk about with all of these.
Yeah.
It, it, it's, we're doing, you're doing great in terms of generating the list, each one can have its own conversation, what I would recommend or propose is that we continue generating the list, the raw list, set the priorities, and then maybe for future meetings or whatever, then you, then you go back and you have the substantive discussion about, okay, given this, where, where do we wanna go?
I think we should probably have some discussion about sewer system in the Old Village, because that's kind of, uh, a big thing that needs to be looked at if we're gonna have.
Would that be separate from water, or?
Yeah, we'll put it.
You've got it there as the historic village.
Oh, no, I mean the sewer.
We got water.
I'm all in.
Put sewer off to the side.
Yeah.
Bicky poop and bats on the.
Absolutely, I've just gotta find a spot that nobody's gonna see it.
You can't flush your toilet after midnight.
Well, it just doesn't dump into the rom.
So this is great. You've got 11 items. Is there a number 12, a number 13? I feel like I'm at an auction. Do I hear 14? Do I hear 15? I can't talk that fast.
It's a gift.
So I think we've got an opportunity, you're going to say something, staff's got an opportunity to, to speak up and, and put ideas. It's, it's been a lot of the council talking. I want to make sure that we want to hear what's out there and you've got an opportunity to voice it, so.
Is this capturing everything?
Silence, silence is compliance. If you don't speak up, you think this is it, this is everything, I have nothing else to say?
This might fall under community risk assessment.
Okay.
Okay.
So that encompasses many things. It might come back to the emergency management one, two, or the one that Paul had put up.
Okay, the critical incident, emergency management, like active shooter is an example.
Community risk assessment overall, three spire.
Okay. Why don't I put that underneath related to a community risk assessment?
So this is a question more than a goal probably, but where, because I, simply because I don't know, where, where are we in terms of, uh, plans as far as, uh, emergency management, setting up incident command within the city? And I, I'm sure you, you are, have plans to fire incident command, but a more broad community incident.
What I'd like to see Paul and I do is have the, have probably once a quarter have, um, emergency management training. That'll help with what we call, uh, C-Flop, command, finance, logistics, operations, and planning. Those are the different categories that fall within a large, as you're probably aware, in some capacity, you're working at the hospital, but, and then that way everyone in the office has the opportunity and then to consult council because council will come in and, you know, be the face of the city and so forth. So that's something that I would like to see us do like once a quarter.
So, so our emergency operations centers are Public Works. The training room at Public Works is our main one. Um, and if that gets destroyed, it would be here at City Hall or at the City Council chambers.
So do we have.
Our plan.
Incident command structure laid out? I mean, does Zach become, in non-fire incidents, does Zach become the incident commander or the mayor or?
So for, for any natural disaster, train derailment, anything like that, the emergency manager would become incident command. And then your chiefs of public safety, um, so like me, if I wasn't, if Gary was incident command, I would be operations for police. Marty would be operations for public works. Um, and then he would have somebody be operations for fire. And then operations would have, us three would be in our own area. And then you would have finance, which would be Zach. You would have, um, who else do you have? Logistics.
PIO.
Logistics could be, you know.
PIO, you would either incident command or whoever usually incident command along with the mayor or emergency management director and the mayor.
Kelsey would do a fine job.
And is this captured under this, under the critical incident plan? It sounds like you already have stuff in play, or at least some of what you want to place. So I just want to make sure that the list includes, captures what you guys are saying or what you're alluded to.
Do we have that documented down anywhere?
I think the missing piece is the training or.
We have.
Well, the training.
We've never done training with staff.
Sounds like you've got a plan, but if, if nobody else in the room knows about it, it's not going to work if it's needed.
So we're a custodium with, um.
The North.
The North Emergency Management Group. So we work, um, on plans. It was called the Minwack. I don't even think they suffice as Minwack anymore.
They went back to it.
Okay. So we create the plan as a group and that encompasses all the cities within the northwest or North Emergency Management Group. So there's one plan for all the cities that involve. So we all have the same plan, um, and then appendixes to go with it.
Well, we ultimately, that's, we need to do is bring it to the city level so that there's something specific, like I heard, uh, activity centers sheltered with red cross. So that would be known. So you might be in charge of sheltering or as an example, I tend to, Parker Rex typically are associated with sheltering and.
When they have a training again for it, we'll send you, but right now we don't.
So there's a lot of interest to see to your point, David, and underneath that, but there is an overarching plan and then we just need to specify it more to our community.
So just to, just to kind of, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I, I know we're, we're getting into solving it, not identifying the goal, but I know you made a comment earlier, what, what, what happened with Fox Night News shows up in your driveway and says, what about the spill in Dayton and your?
That's not the time to figure it out.
Right. So who's our public information officer? You should know that and say, well, you need to talk to Teresa.
And so that's captured.
And she should know that that's her job, right?
So I just want to make sure that that's captured here under number six, that you, that you guys understand, because it sounds like that is an implementation piece to kind of finish up. It sounds like a lot of it's already in place, but maybe it's documenting and the training and stuff like that. Okay. Other, I have a, yes, go for it.
So I have, uh, so as far as amenities and activities, um, before we can get to that point, we need to have a comprehensive park and recreation department, meaning not just me.
Okay.
So I can't do much more than what I'm already doing. I'm working on my wizard skills, but I'm not there yet, friends.
You're looking specifically for activities or are you talking about?
You could put it as staffing needs.
Activities and amenities kind of go hand in hand.
Oh, staffing is the general and then that's an example. Okay.
Wait, what?
Staffing has general and then have underneath a comprehensive code rec program.
I think we, I think we need to identify what that is going to look like. At the end of the day, we're still trying to come to terms with that.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm working on it, but I didn't want to go on saying it.
At, at this point, what we're trying to do is capture the ideas, knowing that over time you're going to have to come back after you set your priorities and take it. This is when we have the substantive conversation.
And I kind of, I'm not sure what to put on these lists, but I mean, there's like, you know, do we put on there trail planning? Because, you know, every time we have a park commission meeting, they're talking about trails, but is that really a CIP item or is that for this? That's kind of where I'm getting hung up. Compre, having a comprehensive parks and trails plan would be fitting.
We have one.
We already have one, but yeah, that's kind of, I don't know how that fits in there.
That maybe fits back to us figuring out what our commissions are doing.
Yeah. But I don't know if that goes under amenities or the, yeah, because we've got the park up there as well.
I could, yeah.
It could be in a couple of places.
I could say it could be a couple of places. The commission one would be good one to have because then they could identify what they're looking for for trails or what they're looking for for parks. So that'd be a good identification for that commission to be able to do. But it also goes back to the amenities portion of what we're going to do. What, what does that amenity look like for us?
So it goes, it does cross over and they should come up when we fill out those, those headings and.
So is there something to add on this?
I would do parks slash trails.
It only gets worse.
Up here, park, yeah, and then maybe the arrow on the trail or something and then.
New snowmobile.
Mark, park slash trails.
Yep. And then, yeah, and then commissions.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we have, we got it. I think we can understand.
So I want to, I want to do, I want to do a time check. I don't know how you guys work. It's been about two hours. I personally need a quick break. I don't know if we want to take a short 10-minute stretch break and then come back. And what I would propose.
All needs it, yeah.
And what, what I would propose is when we come back, we take a final look at the list and then we go back and we try and set some priorities on it. And then we can turn to the implementation, how the staff and the council can be kind of supporting each other for success moving forward. Does that work?
Yep.
Pretty point, David, for like police incidents.
Resass, thank you.
PIO is.
Yeah, resass.
That's, that's the same with fire, any fire incident. It's fire doesn't need any natural disasters throughout the city. It's usually the mayor along with, because we don't have a designated PIO, um, set up for our city.
The mayor.
It usually be the mayor and the emergency manager to be your PIO as in a natural disaster. It's usually how it goes until you get a community, like we've been talking, get a communi, community or communication person for the city. So if you get a communication person for the city, then you can direct them as your PIO for the city. But that's usually in, in smaller cities, it works as any police related incidents, the police chief or the designated fires, fire chief in there designated, natural disasters, the mayor and the emergency manager director. Sorry.
All I know is my closet stocked up.
With guns or with food?
Yes and yes.
You got the moonshine in the back?
No, I don't have the moonshine.
Oh, you need that to get through a natural.
I was going to say, that's the fun.
So did they win?
No, and I didn't expect them to unfortunately. I, he is, he gets so mad at himself because he's the goalie and he's, he had, this is the, this team that they played tonight to move into the championship round. They've lost one game all season. And so I knew that.
So they're pretty good?
Yeah, they are. And they probably should play, my end plays at the B1 level. This team should probably be an A-level team. Um, but it's just a lot to do with his team and not going after the puck. So he had 37 shots on goal that he took and he saved. But it's just a lot to do with his team and not going after the puck. So he had thirty-seven shots on goal that he took and he saved.
So let me put, let me put in parenthesis, under planning includes new roads.
I know this is Michael writing.
So we got the critical incident, is there an A, B, and C within it, or do we just keep it together and you'll kind of sort out what you need to add?
I think the main point comes from.
Okay, well, the main deal is there is just to get it into action. Exactly. Is there another one that's a top priority that's in your group one?
I think staffing.
So staffing needs?
Yeah.
Consensus?
We're kind of already working on that though, aren't we? I mean, if it happens.
It must be a priority. We're currently working on it. So, is it okay if I give it a number one? Yep, okay. Any others with a number one? We've got land use, compliance amenities, fixing the core services, infrastructure, public safety commission, we've got critical incident plan slash emergency management slash community risk assessment, example, active shooter. We've got commissions with clear goals and deliverables. We've got taxes in relation to new development. We've got city facilities which may relate to core. I'm expand, two parts, maintaining and then expanding or future planning. Got branding of the city. We've got the water systems and water slash sewer system with Old Village, South Extension, Maple Grove Agreement. And then we've got staffing needs and comprehensive recreation programming. So, first question, is there anything missing that you want to add to the list? And then our task is to see if we can come up with priorities, one, two, three, four, and so on. Anything more for the, I mean, it can always be reopened in the future, but is this good for tonight, or is there more that we want to add?
I'd like to add one more just for staffing needs, just to say, I mean, comprehensive rec plan is great if we're gonna do those activities and amenities, I completely agree with that. I just want to make sure we're looking at all staffing needs too.
Okay.
Is that, as we grow, we're gonna continue to need more staff and making sure that everybody in this room knows that we're gonna need more staff at just where and when and we'll.
Are we just still looking at over two years on this, or?
I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, one could argue we're under staff now.
Yeah, that's, and that point is like in city hall and just coverage and services.
So are all staffing needs looking forward? Does that capture it?
It'll, it'll always be there, I think, whether it's up or down, but.
Right, but better to have it and say we can defer or we deal with it today rather than not write it down and then forget.
This is, so some of these are kind of functions of, of roads, land use, that, that kind of stuff has to be. The critical incident plan probably has to be. There's a few things I hear that, 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 I guess what I'm getting at is I, I see quite a few number one items.
So what we could, what we could do is we could have priorities. We could have, which ones are the number one priorities, and maybe there are three of them. Which ones are the next tier of priorities? Would that, would that help a little bit?
That would.
And then within it, you could decide which one do we do first. Is that okay? So we're not gonna go one through eleven, we may have three ones and two twos or whatever. So let's start with the number ones. Which ones stand out as the top priority items?
You don't put your green stickers next to the one?
I'm not, I'm, you know, I don't know if I ever brought stickers to me.
Oh, okay.
But I do have a red pen, thanks to Zach, maybe. Okay, so which, which ones are your number one priorities? There could be multiple.
Roads. So, some of them already started as well, so the, the road study is already started.
It's messy.
So.
That's okay, I mean, there can be internal sorting.
Okay. And it could be that, for example, like you said, the roads, we put that as number one and the answer is, oh, stop.
Which is great.
But at least you look at it, you look at it first. Is there, is there another, is there another number one? So like the, the critical incident would be another number one, top priority, yes?
I would say yes.
You mentioned that one too right, Dennis.
Yeah, it seems like that's a, that's kind of an, almost like a.
It feels like that's, yeah, it feels like that's a subset of one of them, but.
Yeah. And remember, this is kind of a rough cut. This is not the final list. We're, we're just clustering right now.
I, I would say it's a number one because we, it's never been done here with the training and everything else.
Okay.
Feels like, yep.
Good, yeah, good, excellent.
So Scott mentioned something that, I mean, roads, we almost have maybe priorities that are separate.
Okay.
We certainly have road needs as far as repair goes, but there's also a planning aspect and that might have a different priority.
So do you want a number one next to repairs, or do you want the number one over the whole category?
I think, I think in the planning side of it.
I would say the whole category, the whole thing.
Because if you're talking repairs and planning, then maybe the whole category gets a number one. And you can do some internal sorting.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
So you could break it out, transportation, have it, your planning portion of it, it be the number one priority, number two priority is repairs and the list under repairs.
I mean, the repairs, the, the repair piece won't happen until we get the, the results back.
Right.
And that might be July, August.
It'll happen next one to be two years.
So then, so is plan, if, if we're gonna do one, A, B, C.
Yeah, correct.
Which would be the A, planning?
Planning.
Me, planning.
Yeah.
And then which would be the B?
Repair.
Repairs.
And then C is probably new roads? If we had to pick in three, the three categories of it.
I think the new roads is where they should be. That's part of your planning.
I agree with Scott.
So let me put, let me put in parenthesis, under planning includes new roads. I know this is Michael writing.
Still better than my handwriting.
Alright, competition. Okay, another number one. So we, we put, we got the critical incident, is there an A, B, and C within it, or do we just keep it together and you, you'll kind of sort out what you need to add?
I think the main fault comes from.
Okay, we'll do it together.
The main deal is there is just to get it into action.
Exactly. Is there another one that's a top priority that's in your group one?
I think staffing.
So staffing needs?
Yeah.
Consensus?
We're kind of already working on that though, aren't we? I mean, if, at least if it happens.
Yes.
It must be a priority. We're currently working on it. So, is it okay if I give it a number one? Yep, okay. Any others with a number one? We've got land use, compliance amenities, fixing the core services, infrastructure, public safety commission, commissions in general, clear goals and deliverables.
When we say number one, are we looking for like six months down or eight months out, or?
Within the next two years.
We had a year anyway.
Two years is what we had, so.
Well, that land use better be done by December.
Well, number one's gotta be focused on first, so that's gonna be like, number one, it might not be two years, it might be six months, but.
Maybe one way to think about it is if you're building your work plan.
Yep.
What's the, what's on the top of your work plan list?
I would say land use has got to be up there.
Okay, so that'd be a number one?
I would concur.
Okay. Alright. Any others, or are we moving on to two?
A lot of planning for one, number one.
Say again?
So that's a lot of planning for the, for the number one.
Yeah, number one is, is like the next two years totally.
Yeah.
Or more. Um, what would be your next tier?
There'd be one.
Sorry?
There'd be one year.
It better not be two years for all that stuff.
I mean, that's good to be thinking about, absolutely, absolutely. So, as you look at the next tier, number two, oh, what color do we want to use? It's orange.
Those don't make two years, my ass is out of here. The water system.
The water system?
Yeah, water.
Okay, so that'd be number second tier, okay? Other, other that would be second tier?
I think facilities, future, current.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, so facilities, expand, maintain, current needs, future planning, that'll be number two?
Should that be number one, because it's planning? They need to come after the comp, plan pieces after.
I don't think we need to plan currently today for facilities, I think we, the other planning focus would be those things.
You can plan it, but it might be five years.
Yeah, so I think that's a number two. It makes sense to have a number two that, except the planning portion of that's gonna be number two.
Okay. Any other number twos? These are, we're just clustering now. Are we gonna have things lower than number two?
Yeah.
There could be, yeah, third, yeah. So fixing the core services, there's a proposal that this is a number two cluster as opposed to number three? Number two, fixing the core services, infrastructure, yes, no?
I guess I'm not sure what that means.
I was just gonna ask the same question.
Yeah, maybe we can get.
I don't know if we've already kind of touched on it a little bit, different spots, facilities, water system, again, kind of got, that got kind of broken out.
Should we cross it off?
X it out.
You ready? We're, we're gonna X this, this is done, progress.
Kind of got broken down on that other side over there.
Okay. So we've got taxes in relation to new development, facilities, we've already covered, we've got branding, and.
That zoning thing's gotta get taken care of in the next three years.
Uh, I, so land, uh, land use, RE zoning and all that stuff, that's gotta be part of land use.
That's part of, yeah, all of, all of that is part of number one, top, top.
I think for number two, all getting the commissions, goals and objectives and everything solidified so the commissions know their exact rules.
That's how they can be acted.
Sure.
Straight away.
So that'd be number two?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna put public safety and commissions in general together, is that right?
Yeah, both together.
Okay.
Whether we need to have a public safety commission and then also getting deliverables and ideas from the, which makes sense.
Alright, so what we have left are amenities, activities, for example, parks and trails.
Branding.
And branding.
And taxes.
Taxes.
Well, so the taxes thing, I think, I don't know that that's a specific.
Cool.
Is that something you can, well, I, I just.
It's a policy decision.
Yeah, it's something that we have to look at when we redo all of this stuff, I think, and I don't know how you work that in as.
So I guess the question is.
Or you keep that on your, when we do the priorities of each one, you keep that as your ultimate goal at the end, like staffing needs. Your ultimate goal is to also keep your tax levy kind of similar while filling staffing needs or, um, with the water system, your ultimate goal is you don't want to have to put a bunch of money out that the citizens are gonna have to, so you try to find ways throughout your priorities and that to keep the tax levy at it.
But the water system doesn't affect the taxes, does it? It's separate funding.
Yeah, but you could, you still have.
You could, it's, it, you could clarify it as a tax that costs them money to out of their pocket.
Yeah, but not everything has to get measured against that, something, some things do. Well, the policy, as I'm under, I don't mean to speak over you, the, what I'm, if I understand correctly, the policy question is how to deal with taxes moving forward in relation to new development and existing land you, um, homeowners or, however you divide it. And I don't know if that's just a council discussion and action item, or whether that's something that happens organically.
Well, it, it, I, I don't know that either because in the end, all of this boils up to a final bill.
Right.
And, and so you really can't allocate, you know, that, that goal to individual goals, but it does, in total, it, it applies.
Right.
Took it to go be.
Executing while keeping a, a balanced budget in mind.
See, that's, yeah, it's almost like it's just one of those things that you gotta have in front of everybody that, oh, by the way, just let's keep an eye on this thing.
So if I can just be clear, and maybe it's my own ignorance, the question as I look at this is whether to structure the taxes so that additional taxes attached to new development as opposed to everyone, or is that already a decision that's kind of been made?
It's kind of hard to explain.
The tax rate's at thirty percent, we wanna keep the tax rate at thirty percent, so whatever we levy for the next budget, we want to still see the tax rate at thirty percent.
Not, not exactly.
I think that's what he said.
So the, I'll use your example, thirty percent tax rate today, there's only, of next year, there might be a portion of it with just people's home values going up. We saw it last year when twenty percent home values happened last year. So part of the increase in the tax, you know, rate is, you want to keep the same tax rate, that's great, but now everyone's houses, everyone's houses are worth more money. So now you're gonna tax them more money, so next year, if you have to save that same amount of dollars out of somebody's pocket, you have to lower the tax rate to twenty-four percent or twenty-two percent.
Really, what it boils down to is we have new revenue sources from increased value and from new value.
Yes.
And all I'm saying is I, I think, we'll have to see what the capacity numbers come in, but that new value is, is, I think, upper grabs.
More important, more important than those.
So I want to make sure that I'm not having a separate conversation that, what you're describing. To me, it sounds like the question is, have you already made a collective decision that that's the direction you will go, or is that an agenda item you need to deal with?
I think that the agenda item might just be dealt with.
Well, yeah, eventually it'll be, do we want to spend this much money?
Right, and so the question is, at what point in the sequence of things does that agenda item have to come up? Is that in group one, or is that group two, or group three?
I, I think it's part of all of it.
So it sounds like bring it up earlys, should I put a one next to it? I don't want to push you, but I just want to be clear.
I think, I think it's, I agree, but it's something that's hard to think about because it's related to everything. No matter if you spend money on.
Yeah, fair enough.
Facilities, or staffing, or.
We have to think about the wording of this too.
Correct.
I read this as, you want to tax new homes more than everyone else. And I know, I know, I know now that's not what you're saying, but even when you said it, that's, that's what I thought, and I'm like, huh, what? So I was confused, so.
So you're on the.
You get personally attacked. No, no, it's not, I officially live through for your, no longer a new home, so.
Yeah.
But I, I guess even the way that, that, I'm not picking apart what you said the way you said, but just that's how I interpreted it, and so I think, I don't quite understand what even is it.
Capacity is two sources. It's increased value on properties and it's new property, new value.
More people in here, yeah.
And, and so, new properties means new homes, new industrial areas, new blah blah blah, it's not, you know.
Yeah, pot of land that was worth five hundred bucks a year goes now it's worth six hundred thousand, that's just a brand new house on.
Right, that's, yep, so that's the new capacity.
So are you saying? Are you saying that you would like the, the spending to come in correlation with the amount of new, new taxes that are coming in on the new construction? Because, as an example.
Yeah.
Twenty-two, you might have seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of new taxes off of twenty-one's construction, that's what staff can spend.
Yeah, that's how I interpret it.
Yeah, because essentially, if we don't improve a tax levy increase, everyone's taxes drop like a rock, because it gets, the pie gets spread across so many more people. So if you look at it, you've got this many more people contributing to the pie, and we just make sure that only the new people that are try to look at, make sure spending that limits to.
When we get the, the report, it'll have legacy and it'll have new.
Yeah, simple, last year was a great example. So last year we had a thirty-three percent increase in tax capacity overall in this community. Eighteen percent of it was related to new development, and fifteen percent of it was related to legacy homes because it had to go increase in valuations of their homes, so that's what.
So for our purposes, I'm gonna recommend that we put it as a number one because it's just sort of ever-present, it sounds like, and it may or may not be an action item.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
But it is something, if it is something that you're paying attention to, out of the gate, is that okay?
Well, I, I agree with that, and I, I think also because the five of us have not fully had this conversation.
Right.
Because we've gotten some, well, not clarity on.
Yeah, exactly.
What it means to everybody.
Yeah, and it would be helpful to have that discussion earlier rather than.
We all agree that that's our philosophy.
Right, exactly, okay, good. Alrighty, so what we have left is branding of the city and amenities, activities, parks and trails. Are they?
I think parks and trails kind of falls in with all this commission goals, would you agree with that? Marty, you think it's separate?
I think that's separate.
It, it depends on what they do with it.
Yeah, well, true, I guess.
That's true. What do you guys think? Where, does this make sense? Where, do we put it in number two? Do we fold it into something that's already there? You don't want to lose an idea if it's distinct.
I, I think even on that bullet, there's probably distinct things that we might bump around.
Yeah, even with the.
For example, you know, uh, phase three of, of Stevens, we might want to put it a higher priority than.
Yeah.
Dex.
So kind of get more granular.
I think so. And maybe that's just so.
If, I have a proposal, I mean, this is absolutely what you guys want to do, I would propose that this be a number two so that it's captured.
That's simple, I could take care of it right now, get rid of this toothpaste and get rid of lip.
Only took, it only took two and a half hours to get needs.
There you go, I think we're doing pretty good, so.
I don't think it's a bad thing to have that in the mind of everybody, that if we wanna look at it, I mean.
And, and I agree with what David was stating earlier about.
Signs that are falling apart.
The branding, are we living, living next to our brand is?
Yeah, are we following?
To be.
And actually, my, my, made more sense is that we emphasize that, are we, you know, i- is this our goal, what's our goal here, because. When that came out, I, I had to laugh, especially when it came, you know.
So.
My time's on it.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
I'm gonna commit to my version of public.
Since my radar's tuned to process stuff. We've got our list of, list of, list of items, we've clustered them in terms of three groups, really two groups, with a third group. I'm guessing that you will want to, within each group, then have highest, what comes first among the ones, and so on, is that something you wanna take up now? Or is that something that we clean it up, or, again, I don't know who, what the next step will be, clean it up and then circulate it, and, I don't know, I'm sort of looking to you for how you do your work. And what would be an efficient way for you to move forward, I mean, we could take time on it now, or we could clean it up and then take a fresh look at it.
I, I think that, you know, clean it up and make it look like something is good, because I think as we start going through it, there are some things that you have to do first, and there's a natural progression with them, like in the transportation, we need to do the study to be able to identify. What repairs and that look like, so I think that if, if we can pull it together, circulate it amongst ourselves and have that kind of discussion.
I think that also makes sense, given, those are our goals for tonight, and we started on just the first one.
Right.
So that might be helpful, but.
Okay, yeah, I mean, some of these are value statements, but you're absolutely right, yeah, in terms of our progress tonight, so, I don't know who I look at, the mayor, the interim city administrator, or all of you. For next steps, is this something that would come back to you, or that you would want me to?
So the next steps for the process, in my head, would be, city staff, probably department heads, would grab this stuff, grab the ones, put them in information, and kind of organize it as best we possibly can to shape it. And then we would have a discussion at a council meeting, likely the twenty-eighth of March, to re-go over it, say, okay, is this what we really feel? Kind of get some bullet points down, kind of get some actual action items down that we can do, to get things processed, and then say, is this what we want? And if everyone says, yep, it's good to go, then we'll approve it on the twenty-eighth, if not, it'll come back on the beginning of April. Likely this will be a annual thing to try to do this, but likely it will happen prior to this time, as we can start working on it.
I think to, what, we, I think we need to clean it up, and then I think we need to break out separate priorities.
I could curio.
And I don't think we're gonna get that done by March twenty-eighth, I think it needs to be, that's almost a two and a half hour conversation.
That's what I was gonna say, I don't, I don't think I'm, I think getting this information out, cleaning it up, and then having a work session just on this would be valuable, I'm not a fan of means just taking means, but I think trying to hash all this out, as part of a. City council meeting is gonna be.
Yeah.
A lot, versus doing a work session before or after a city council meeting to, to make that more manageable, I, I would prefer, 'cause there's a lot of sub-points in a lot of these that, you know.
Would you wanna have another session like this, we can, and, and have that, so go through to the next step, maybe, you know, we got all those other things that we're gonna do.
Clean up looks like.
Yeah, I mean, that, you could decide, I mean, I'm, I'm not certain, but I believe the legal Minnesota cities would be happy to support, but that's actually an Amy question. If you were to involve, whether it's me or someone else, but yeah.
'Cause I think we could get some of it cleaned up, and then break out some priorities of it, like the, like transportation, planning. Stud, and then the studies that are ongoing, and then, 'cause we already know they're ongoing, or started, repairs, and then you guys can make, that way it kind of, once it's cleaned up and separated.
As, as, you know, as staff cleans that up, I think it's gonna be kind of obvious to you what most of these are gonna need.
Yeah.
The sequence of events, so.
Okay, we good on that? So do we need to write anything down on this?
No, let's take those two things, I got the boards, I'll take them and.
It's all recorded.
Hang them in my, I'll hang them in my office, just like the last time, and.
Okay, so, I'm gonna turn these over to Zach.
Last time there was a lot of dots.
There was a lot of dots, they were all over my, they were all over my walls.
If you wanna reminisce, you can put dots on them.
You know, you're taking my pulse, and I was gonna hand out dots at the end of the meeting, just so you could take them home with you.
It naturally does.
Or we can put it on, okay, so.
You're gonna regret sending that picture over.
Yeah.
Alright, so. So in terms of our, the hopes for tonight, agreement on two to three goals for a year or two, I think you really went way beyond. I mean, you developed quite a good list, is it okay if I cross that off?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so, um, the looking forward is, in some ways, a value statement, I don't know if that you wanna come back and actually have a conversation about what that looks like, and. How to sort of navigate that balance between understanding that the city got here because of the history and a context, but it's a fresh start, and you're looking forward. Is that something you wanna focus on? We've got understanding roles and objectives, and then we had a number of items related to communication.
I would say let's go into roles and.
Okay.
Roles and objectives.
Role and objectives.
Fair enough, okay, so let's look at roles, so. As you think about the, the roles. And, um, objectives, what would be, what would be helpful? As a starting, again, I can only speak generically, every city is unique, but as a general matter, in my experience, and I'm just one person. The council sets the policy, and has sort of a unique touch with the constituents as voters and the residents. And the professional staff have a unique perspective, because you're on the ground, actually doing things, and you're interacting with. Citizens in, in terms of the services and the needs, and so, complementing each other, it's actually kind of a nice partnership. But the question that sometimes comes up is, sort of how do the two groups interact in a way that is most effective? I don't know if that's part of the roles piece, or if there are other things that you're thinking.
Yeah, and my, my deal is, is, for what I'm looking at, is if a citizen comes to a council member with a complaint about the police department. How, what role does the council have to follow up on that complaint, or does, are they supposed, or should they be referring it to? The police chief, or, um, the administrator, whoever.
Okay.
To solve their, the issue that the public's bringing forward, or if, they should try to take the role.
Okay, okay, so that is, that's a fair question, when, when, whether it's a complaint or something comes in from a citizen, but it goes to a council member. How, what happens at that point?
Correct.
That works for everyone.
So as a prime example, I got an email from Jennifer about the roads, and I gave it to Marty. I mean, why would a guy give it to you? I mean, that would make no sense, I mean. I, and I, in the same token, I'd give it to you.
But I'm also looking, like, if somebody has a complaint about one of my officers. So, say, somebody comes up to you and say, this officer treated me bad and all that, instead of the council member taking the complaint, doing all that, they should be sending it to.
The first question should be, have you talked to the police chief?
Yep.
Have you talked to Zach? Okay, let's get you in contact with them, let me arrange an opportunity for you to meet them directly to voice your complaint, and get you direct, in my mind, get you directly to the person, I'm here to help support that, and if you feel like, now, I'll sit down with you and listen, so you have the support if you need that. But I wanna get you to the right person, if you still feel like nothing's being taken care of, then I'm, I'm glad to step in and help beyond that, but they're really the experts in their fields, I'm happy to facilitate that meeting, but I don't. That's how I would view it, is the right way to handle that, is that what staff would want to have happen, or do you have something different in mind, or?
That's the way staff would prefer, yeah.
Yeah, it's exactly how staff would like, I think a little bit of that has to go back with that, having the past that we've had, is that that may not have happened in the past, where you might say, go, go talk to that person, and then. There's been no follow-up, or there might be no.
Or might not have had that trust there, so you didn't wanna say, go talk to that person.
Yep, correct, and so that's where, again, it's a looking forward thing, for that aspect, at least, is, is true, that staff would like you to be able to say, did you go talk to, you know, Zach, or the administrator, or. Did you talk to public works director, or did you talk to that person? 'Cause everyone in this room for staff will take care of anything that we need to, with whatever needs are necessary to make the situation better. And so there's not one person in this room that's gonna say, nope, just brush it off under the rug, and that's an understanding that council needs to stay, or understand, too.
I, I like to, kind of related to, 'cause I come from the private sector a lot more than the public sector, is that we, city council, are the board of directors, and all of the department heads are the C-suite. And whether it's an employee that has a problem, or a customer has a problem, if they came to me as the board of directors, my first, I'd be like, I'd love to help you, that's not really my opportunity, I wanna get you in contact with that person to help make that work. Because, if, if you feel like if I talk to them, it's not gonna resolve, I'm happy to step in and figure out more, but let's start where we're supposed to start, you don't, you don't go to the board of directors, you have a problem at, at your local Walmart, like, you just don't, you, you cock the store manager and move your way up, right? And so that, that's the standard way to get stuff done, and so, that's the way, at least, relating it for me helps a lot, having more of the public sector up.
I have to say, I think, from my perspective, that has been happening a little more now, I mean, you guys just, you know, directly send people to me, even, you know.
Always do, Marty, here's Marty's emails.
And that's great, because that's, that's how it should be, and that's, I prefer to handle it that way.
But, but, I, I think maybe where the problem comes in is when somebody comes up to me and says, you know, uh, they have a problem with Marty, because they don't. They don't want to go to you for some reason, I, I see no reason why we wouldn't go to Zach.
And I don't, that's what I said, have you tried going to Paul?
Yeah.
Okay, you tried going to Zach, yep.
If it's against us, like if an employee comes in, I hate, my boss is an asshole, then you should refer him to Zach, and Zach should do the investigation into it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, if there's a problem with them talking to me, then, yeah, definitely could go to Zach, but if it's something that I can deal with, and it concerns my department, then I'm more than happy to field those calls whenever.
And any speed sign complaints?
Marty, yeah, I, I have no, as the minister, I have no problem with council going to department heads and sending off information, because they're the resident expert, I, I don't know about police, I don't know about public works, I'm happy to handle it if it comes to me, if you're like. Did you get ahold of Marty? And they say no, then you go get ahold of Zach, and Zach will get you to Marty no matter what, but typically, it gets handled by Marty, that's great, or Paul, or whoever, it isn't really matter.
I mean, we also had this issue with, um, the shrub deal.
Yep, shrub deal, yeah.
So, so there's a resident that, that the neighbor planted shrubs too close to the line.
Yep.
And, um, I did talk to Alec about that, I think he, um. He, he didn't do what I thought he was gonna do, it, it wasn't necessarily anything on him, and then he left, and so.
Yep, that goes, that's correct, nope, agreed, and that's exactly how it should go, and that's.
And I think there's times too, like, there was somebody online who was asking, like, hey, you know what's going on with West French Lake Road, the city's website says this, I didn't know who to bring it to, so I think I emailed. Amy and Zach, and I was like, hey, this is a link, this here does say it's supposed to be paved right now, it's not, can, who's, who's responsible for it, is it Marty, is it you, like, I don't know, can someone take care of it, and you guys figured it out, and I'm okay with that, too, my goal is just to get it.
If we don't know, if you don't know the answer, Amy, your eyes probably be the great answer for it, if it's directly related to fire, or public works, or. Activity center, go to those resident experts before you come to us, and that, unless you don't get a response, or something else doesn't happen.
And I think something I've heard when I met with all the department heads was, the last place they wanna get blindsided by it is in the middle of a council meeting. So like, if there's a question that we have for them, we know we're gonna ask them, if we let them know ahead of time, they can come more prepared, researched, and answered, it makes us look like a much more well-functioning city, than if all of a sudden we're like, oh, by the way, Marty, I talked to somebody, and X, Y, Z is wrong. Sometimes those do come up, and nobody's perfect, and I've done it to Marty, in all fairness, I try really hard not to, it's, oh yeah, by the way, I just thought of this, that comes up, but I tr, by trying to give the staff a heads up, it lets them, and lets our entire organization, come off as much more professional. Which I think is something we should be striving for as we move forward, personally.
One comment I make, just because of, you know, in my old world, it would be, have been inappropriate for me if I, somebody approached me. With a complaint about an employee in a, in another department, for me to go and address that with that employee, or even that employee's manager, it would. The protocol would be for me to go to that service line director or vice president, and address it with them, and let them handle it down their, their service line, and that's where, I think, Chief, you made a comment around, you know, people should be. Council people should be more comfortable coming directly to you with things, and that's not the, that's not the path that I'm familiar with, or, or at least it's not my, not my past. That I would go to Zach with things, that would be the, the right protocol for me, and if, and if, if what we want, need to be doing, or if that's the right, um, operating.
As an example.
For, for us here is to go directly to department heads, and I certainly have to, Marty, if, if a citizen writes to me and says, you know, this didn't get done right, and I, and I, I don't have the answer to that, Marty, can you, you know, I'll copy Marty on an email, and I respond to him and say. Marty, what do you know about this? And then he jumps in, you know, then I'm not necessarily involved, I would have been probably Tina then, but, you know, then I'm not following my own advice here, but, you know, but that's my, that's, that's my past anyway, is I would go to Zach, and then he would, he would take a time to change.
Roughle feathers, if another manager goes to another manager's employee.
Right.
Yeah, and, and so that would be, I, I think some of this stuff's, you, you, we're small enough, we're being engaged.
I'm not intentionally trying to offend anybody by not, you know, by going to your boss or anybody else's boss first, that's just the, the protocol that I, that I worked with in.
Yeah, it, it's helpful to know that different organizations have different processes, and it sounds like you're describing a process that functioned in a different organization in the past, so what, what process would you all. Prefer to adopt? Would it be to go, if a council person gets a constituent complaint or something, that you go to the department head, or that you go to Zach, and Zach refer, what, what process would you like collectively to?
I think it's, it's kind of dependent on what, what the issue is, as a prime example, when we had, when I had ten or eleven firemen come to, and. It originally started with just one, giving me a phone call and said, hey, we got all kinds of issues going on, and this, this was the meeting that we had here. We went to Zach and said, Zach, we gotta figure this out, and then we ended up having the meeting in the chambers here, with all of them people. I think that would work out perfect, I think.
But did you meet with them prior to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so you had someone had a complaint, you didn't refer them back to their manager, you took the complaint, which, which I think should have happened, is, let's all of us meet up at city hall, I'll call the chief, we'll all come in, and we'll talk about it as a group.
Or have the complainant come in and file the complaint with Zach, and then Zach.
If, if that's better, yeah, but you, you being the spokesperson for them, I don't think is the, the correct function for that.
In this particular instance, and I think we hashed it out, I think we got a final deal on it, they didn't wanna talk to Gary, they didn't wanna talk to Zach. It, it was a resident, because they didn't think they were gonna get anywhere.
But they haven't tried, they need to try first.
I understand that, but, uh, how's the best way to do that?
I think it was wrongfully perceived, because you organized a meeting at your house with multiple members of the fire department, and that looked really bad from staff's perspective, that you would do that, so that was a very negative thing.
I just wanted to hear what the problems were, and at that time, there was an issue that had to get solved, and all of these people gotta sit in a room and just get it figured out.
I don't think there's anybody saying, for that specific example, that there's ill, ill will intent in the action, it's just how do we make that process better next time, as a learning process, the same thing as David's mentioning, is, if I get some court of complaint, who do I give it to? It's the same thing you get, if you get a complaint, tell, talk to Zach, and if, if nothing gets handled, if you talk to Zach, nothing gets handled, then, then come back to me and say, hey, this is an issue. But, for that example is, you know, I'd rather have you go and address the fire chief and say, hey, there was an, there's an issue in your department, let's figure it out, and if it's, and even if it's you initiated the conversation, and say. Let's figure it out, and we can work together, and.
This is where the chain of command comes into play, I mean, ultimately, if you feel the complaint, whatever, I guess, let's, let's separate it, let's make it a little bit more finite, if it's a complaint that you receive, council receives, about a department director. In my perspective, then that would go to Zach.
Correct.
If you find something within the community where, uh, it's related to the fire department, police, or public works, or whatever, then I think you will get a faster response by going to the department director. Being able to just, hey, Gary, the hydrant over here's been run over, and the, it's leaking in the neighbor's yard, or whatever, okay, well then, I would, Marty and I would tackle that together, I think you'd get a faster response that way. Uh, but if it's department director related, then that should circle out.
And I will guarantee, almost nine times out of ten, anything that goes to any one of these directors, comes to me afterwards, I will hear about it, whether one way or the other, everyone goes back to.
See, I would prefer if it was, say, a citizen had a complaint and came to you about one of my personnel, that the complaint comes directly from. of my personnel, that the complaint comes directly from the person that received it to me, because I'm the investigative authority. I'm the one that is investigating that officer on that complaint.
That makes sense, because that's your employee.
From city council to Zach, and I'm getting it third hand, and by the time I get it third hand, I have no clue where it's all been.
The telephone games and play.
Yeah.
So for me, I would prefer that if you received a complaint about one of my employees, because I'm the one that has to investigate it, I'm the one disciplining them, whether it's written, reprimand, three days off, whatever, that comes from me. It doesn't come from the city council and it doesn't come from Zach.
I think your situation is, is unique in, you know, in the way that evidence has to be collected and reports have to be filled out.
Well, we have to do Tennessee warnings.
You need a report from a citizen that's, you know, directly been harmed by the situation.
But the same could be true, if a citizen came and said, the firefighters are flying down my street at 90 miles an hour in the fire truck every day when they go fill it with gas, like I would still go to, I think to Gary for that.
What I'm hearing is actually kind of two related pieces. One is, what is the general practice? And then I think your example is a good one, there's always an exception to a general practice, a unique situation. So how then would you want to handle exceptions? And what I'm hearing is that as a general practice, the preference is to refer the citizen to the department head of the appropriate department. And if there is, if there's a reason not to, like for example, if the complaint's against a department head, then it would go to Zach. But if there is some extenuating circumstance, some reason why the citizen's, I'm not talking to that Fox guy or whatever, then what would be your plan B? Now, I don't have the solution, but one option might be, well then you just, then, then the council person makes a quick call to the department head and you kind of sort it out, on a case-by-case basis. I don't know, I'm not saying that that's the right thing to do, but it seems like there's the general rule and then what do you do when, when an exception pops up?
I think exceptions go to Zach.
I think the exception goes to me. If anything happens, then it's not being handled or something's just, you know, it's not working out, it goes to my desk, because then I can handle it properly and get it back to the information.
The previous administrator, so I would do this, I'd get ahold of Marty or I'd get ahold of Jason, and what she had me do was CC her, so she knew, well.
Yep, correct, yep.
I got.
I CC Zach on everything I send to department heads.
Well, but.
I don't need, because like I said, Marty stops in my office three times a week.
Probably don't, and maybe that's the policy, I just, I was kind of beat into my head that everything gets CC'd to that.
You can CC me if you want, but I don't need to be CC'd.
I think always CC.
I think that's part of getting over the past as well. So that person is no longer here.
Yep.
We don't carry the traits that that person had.
No, but I can tell you that, that managers in general, let's get us back to what David's saying, want to know if you're talking to their employees. And if you don't have the concern, then I'm okay with that.
I would recommend that if you're emailing me a complaint about a citizen, or about one of my employees, that Zach is CC'd on. Because then Zach can check in with me, hey, have you, just to make sure that I'm handling it.
My road's a mess, I don't know, but Zach needs to have a CC for that.
I think it needs to be one circular answer for everybody, so that we have the same answer. And so if Paul's saying we need to CC it on me, I could care less if I'm CC'd or not, because I trust all of my department directors. Yeah, oh, no, I just click it on, you know, I read it and then I move forward and then I'll mark it down as a checkbox and make sure I check back in on it, but.
I like CCing Zach, because I meet with Zach on a weekly basis, and then I can follow them and say, hey, what happened with this email happened with this email. Like it's helpful for me then to have good communication without having to then constantly reach out.
So are the department directors okay with that? That is my question.
To me, it doesn't matter, because you can CC, that doesn't matter to me. If you don't CC, I always, what I do with Zach is I always close the communication. Hey, you know, the mayor stopped by today and had a question about this, just letting you know that this is our discussion, just so that he's in that loop, constant loop. So Dennis goes to Zach and says, hey, I haven't heard anything from Gary about X Y Z, you know, have you heard anything or whatever? So to me, I always close that loop with him. He CCs me on a regular basis. We meet once a week and.
I would, I have no issues with this Zach meeting. I think he should be CC'd, he's ahead of the.
I don't have a preference on except for that. If you want to have all those emails.
I would say that when it comes to employees' issues, I don't think you would need it for, do you want it for everyone?
No, I don't think I need it for everyone.
Just employees.
Yeah. If it's like, these people are speeding down my street, just talk to him, because I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna do anything about it anyways.
I'll put you out there.
Give the stocks up.
Sure.
Can I have the chicken out there with the slow signs?
I'm okay with that, it's just, I'm just saying that some managers, and this isn't just limited to your, your previous person, but they don't like.
I am, I am 100% trust in everyone that sits at this table, so I will tell you that every one of them follows up with me if something happens, so. And I appreciate that.
So just to be really crystal clear.
Thank you.
So the practice will be, if a complaint comes to a council person, the council person will contact the department head and CC Zach, just so that you know. Is that correct?
Unless, in my opinion, you should amend that to, unless it's about that department.
Right. Then it goes directly, yeah, that's exactly right. Then it goes directly to Zach. So then there's one granular piece left, and that's closing the feedback loop back to the council person. So is there an expectation that if Zach is getting CC'd on something, he needs to reply to all of them? Or it's okay that he doesn't reply? I just want to be explicit so that there's no confusion about it.
I think that to should reply. So if it's to Zach, Zach should reply. If it's to Chief Engo with Zach on CC, I would hope to receive some kind of reply back. I know, because if that citizen reaches back out to me and says, I haven't heard anything, and I'm like, that's weird, he emailed me, and I'm like, why? It helps me better say, hmm, you know.
Just so it's been resolved, or?
Does that work for?
I want to be clear about how I read emails too. If it's to me, I'm gonna respond, and if I'm copying on it, it's information to me.
100%.
I agree.
So if it's sent specifically to you and everybody else is CC'd, you'll respond to it? If you're just, everybody's on the to line, you respond.
I'll respond to it.
If it's to you, respond.
If I'm copied on it, it's information.
You got it.
And I don't feel obligated to respond, and I'm precluded from that, but I view it as information.
Cool.
Good.
Is that clear?
No, it's clear, I'd like to take that a step further though. So the subset of that would be, or maybe another category is, if you have a question about anything, call me. Click on the phone, give me a call, or if I see a council, hey Gary, I got a question about X Y Z. Or to Matt's point, if you got something you want brought up at council, give me it earlier in the day, I can address it for you. Or if you come to me and ask a question, because I really want to have that dialogue. I want to be able to build that relationship and have that understanding of kind of what you're looking for, or vice versa, and take that opportunity. Because I know right now, you run a lot of things for him, he's got plenty of time to do nothing but answer your emails. I see, they're joking. But I mean, my, my point is, is that you ask, you know, I mean, I'm happy to come in and talk to you about whatever. I mean, what we just talked about, I completely buy into, without a doubt. But I'm used to a committee structure, or even having more of these types of meetings where we have direct, as directors, we're having interaction with councils, so if we're having work sessions or whatever, and that might be something specific, but even if it's not something specific, before we talked about committees, and I know we're gonna get to that at some point, we had a committee structure, it was public safety, public work, so there was two council members on that committee, and then everything went through that group. And then two of the council members were familiar with what the context of the discussion was, and then that got brought up at the larger council meeting if it needed to, so that way at least there is some initial buy-in from the beginning, instead of being, hey, I want to come and buy that now $4 million fire truck, you know, because of inflation. But, boy, that's God.
$4 million.
So I've, I've heard this actually come up twice, if my memory serves me, and I want to just sort of name it and see if there's a decision or consensus. And that is, it sounds like there are, there are issues that may come up to the council that involve departments. And what I'm hearing, which actually makes some sense to me as an outsider, that it can be helpful if the department heads have a heads-up in advance as to what the issue is or what's coming up, so that you can, if you have to do a little bit of research or pull information together, that that actually adds to the efficiency and effectiveness of when the council meeting happens. Is that an accurate statement?
Having met with all the heads of departments, that was the one consistent thing, from everybody that everyone wanted, was that piece, yes. Unless anyone disagrees with that, but that's what y'all told me when you met.
So I, I don't know whether this is relevant or not, but I just want to lift up, are there any, it sounds like a good practice, but I'm an outsider, are there any concerns about it? Are there any, is there any discomfort about, is this ex parte communication? Is this violating any open meetings law, which I personally don't see, but I mean, now's a good opportunity to kind of sort things through so that whatever you land on.
Technically, those won't.
I know that, but I just want to be explicit about it.
He's saying somebody may feel that way, and now's a good turn of voices, so we can talk about it and feel.
Yeah, I think if, if things are being planned, not on that camera, that's not good.
You mean by council members or by staff or general?
So this would be like, say, you have a question about my staff report, you reach out to me and ask me that question, and I answer the question to you. But then, or at least I have time to research it. I have no problem with you guys asking questions at the council meetings out in the public, but I'd like to be prepared with my answer, rather than getting blindsided at the council.
And I think things that, that require some digging, you know, that, or the expectation should be that the question we just asked can't have an answer until next time.
Yep.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So it sounds like the, the boundary point is, like alerting someone that this is an issue coming up, these are some things we'd like to talk about at the council meeting, that's safe game, that's, that's good to go. It's deliberating and deciding, that happens in the public forum.
I think in some instances where you get asked a question by a member of the public, and you want us to respond, so they, they see on camera that you're asking a question and representing them and getting an answer. I, I feel like sometimes it'd be good, although generally I can answer the questions, but it might be good in some instances, if you gave me a heads-up, I'm gonna be asking you this question, and then we can just discuss, and then I can give it a full and frank answer.
That's a good point, because sometimes we do ask questions because, because, not because it's necessarily a gotcha, but because residents have been asking about it. So, yeah.
And if you don't get ahold of us beforehand, that if you ask the question at the council meeting, just expect that I'll have it at the next council, the answer at the next council meeting.
Followed with you, X Y Z.
And Zach will go with that too, so often times, I'll say, hey Zach, can you make sure, so I'm gonna ask those questions, make sure I come prepared to answer it, so they know, and then he works with them to figure it out. If I can't get ahold of them.
How is this working for other council members? Is this sort of work for you?
I find it after a year and a half to still be confusing at times. You know, and I think I said this to you, Matt, that, you know, in the private sector, I mean, I solve half my problems in the hallway. You know, and we don't get to do that. You know, I can't talk to Dennis, and then he talks to Scott, and Scott talks to Matt, and by the time we get to the meeting, we know what the solution is. You know, we can't do that, but we did that all the time. And, you know, and there was nothing wrong with that, but now we, you know, we don't get to work that way. It needs to be in the public view, and I understand why it has to be that way, but it's sort of clumsy.
I wish email was considered public view, because all of our emails are public record, and we could do more of that via email. I know we can't, I wish we could as well.
I don't know the answer to this, because I'm not deeply familiar with the resources that League of Minnesota Cities has, but its manual is quite, it's available to you, no charge. It's very comprehensive, and it may actually have some guidance, I don't know. There may be some guidance in that around how, how, I don't know if you want to call it best practices, but that's judgmental, but how other cities handle these kinds of things. Because there are gray areas, there are judgment calls, and what I'm hearing very clearly is you want to make sure that you're doing the right thing, which makes absolute sense. And the question then is, are there ways to give heads-up, to alert the department so that everyone can be ready without worrying that you've crossed the line? And I'm sure that there are ways to do this without causing any less.
Because oftentimes to me, it feels like when we, when we introduce a topic and have to discuss it and then, you know, get to an answer, in the short time we have at the council, it feels like we're, we're not giving it its due. You know, it feels like a superficial conversation, and now we have to land the plane. And, you know, it doesn't, that doesn't feel good to me. And for myself, I need to process things, I need to hear the information, and I need to think about it a little bit. And that doesn't work in the, in a public setting. It looks like you're sitting there with your thumb up your.
You know.
And that's why I think a lot of cities have gone to doing work sessions prior to each meeting, they hash everything out in the work session, which is on camera and the public can view. And then by the time when it goes to the council meeting, you got that time to process some of it and get to it. And I know you guys, I know people don't like to work sessions.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah. But at some point you need to. I also talked to other people on other councils, a lot of this is, so to me, there's a difference between what's legal and what's correct. And I will see other councils do the not correct stuff all the time.
Because it's technically legal.
Because it's technically legal, and therefore they do what they can get away with.
I think that's very fair.
Yeah.
Can you tell me what that, I'm just curious what you're.
So for example, you can pretty much decide anything if you have a launderer, so a focus point. So for example, if Zach wanted to get some decision, he could email, individually email us.
Sure.
Ask for, pretty much set up the whole world, and it's legal.
Okay.
Because we're not emailing each other.
Sure.
But it's going through him, it's legal.
And then you just make the final decision.
And then, yeah, we show up at council and it's on the agenda, it's rubber stamped. And the other thing that's legal, which, I talked to League a number of times about this, is I can email everybody and tell them what I think should be done. The instant, and that's legal, but the instant they reply?
Then it's not.
Then it's not. Except I've just given my opinion to everybody, and we've seen this a couple times over the past couple of years, history. And it really irked me, and I let the person know, hey.
Because they didn't share your opinion first, or because?
That's, no, because it was not, to me, it was getting around the law.
How is that any different than someone going on social media and posting their opinions on things that's open to all of us, as well as other residents?
I, I, I guess.
To me, that's after the fact.
I'm not, I wasn't calling, I'm saying, like, how was it any different? When we were campaigning, all of us posted videos on what we thought of certain topics that were posted on Facebook, that's us, and we essentially shared that with each other at that point.
Yeah, but we didn't necessarily respond to each other.
Correct. But that's the same as not responding to the emails, I'm trying to say, it's like, that's the same thing as not responding to the email.
There's no doubt that the law is, is hard to, here's another one that you'll run into, which just is really frustrating. If you have a personnel issue, that has to be.
Closed doors.
Yeah, it's just messy. You can't force that behind closed doors if the person that you're talking about says, no, I want this open. And therefore, it's really hard to bring something up that, you know, may, may not And 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 therefore, it's really hard to bring something up that, you know, may may not necessarily be something the public needs to know, but because of the open meeting law, it it's there. It's it's messy.
Yeah, the only time you can discuss employee issues is if the employer you're discussing allows it to be done.
Employee, yep.
Employee, yep. I appreciate you sharing that. To go back slightly to to David's point, I think part of, I'm with you, like, I think I'm, a lot of my things get solved before and after the meeting, in the hallway, in the follow-up meeting, whatever. I think I, it's harder to do that. I also think it's, I oftentimes, we're up there talking and we're like, we've been talking about this for 20 minutes. And it's like, we're also, there's like this clock of like, oh, we're keeping, you know, the chief's here late, Marty here late and Amy and and Zach here late, we don't want to, so we're like up against the clock sometimes. Maybe that's an internal pressure I put on it, but I feel oftentimes like we're up against the clock.
I think there's a difference between exploring and rehashing. And and that's where I draw the line is I I I I think, for example, these preliminary plats, I'd like to see them a few times, but we don't because we have the 180, 120 day rule. And by the time it gets to us, it's just getting up there.
110 days.
Um, I would love to see those a couple of times after some revisions. The problem is.
Let's bring that up in development review.
Yeah, I can bring it up.
It's.
Because we do our development review meetings and if that's something council wants to see, we can, we can definitely tell the planners, hey, the minute you get that preliminary plat, council wants to see it twice, so let's.
We could even do a, if you want to do a work session on those preliminary plats, you could do a, you could do a work session on it and say, it's going, we're going to bring it before. We might be have everything finalized, we'll bring it to you for comments so that we can have it. That way we have time to go back to the developer to say, these are the counts we have based on the preliminary plat. And we have time to do that. If we, if that's a decision that the council, I I think that's fine.
I think that's helpful, actually, because then we're not wasting your time and, you know.
And sometimes we sit on those plots just to sit on them because we're like, well.
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll just wait for 90 days or whatever till we get them.
I think that's what's been happening.
I think a lot of them do.
So if we can bring that up.
We just, we auto do the 120 because it gives us more time.
It's not like we get a lot of them.
No, we could, if that's something that the council wants to do, I think that's a great conversation.
So I'm I'm hearing, I don't, I guess.
Yeah, we didn't know that.
I'm hearing two, I'm hearing two conversations, they're related, but I want to make sure we're clear about what we're talking about. There there's the general question of when, what, and how to communicate in advance of council meetings with the department heads so that everyone gets a heads up and they can do whatever preparation is necessary. And and so that when you get to the council meeting, everyone is kind of ready to pool the resources and you can deliberate and you can make your decisions. That's the general rule. What I'm hearing is that as a general practice, that makes sense. And you need to be careful about where you get close to the line on actually starting to deliberate and discuss decisions that are coming up. The second piece, which is related to plat approval, that sounds like it's an important, but a distinct kind of piece on its own. Is that, is that fair?
That's a total sidebar.
So so coming back to the general question, do you have consensus on how you want to handle this? That the, as I'm trying to summarize what I'm hearing and not add my own thinking on it, that the general practice is, if the council sees that there's something coming up that's going to relate to the department, to communicate with the department head in advance as possible, at least, or give them a heads up so that the department head is not taken by surprise and can do whatever preparation they might need for the council meeting, understanding that the actual deliberation has to happen in public because that's the right way, the right thing to do. Is that, is that kind of where you're at?
The only, the only thing that I would say there is, is me personally, I don't like a coerced answer, a studied answer, unless it involves more detail. If if I say, Marty, did you handle that road, the road sign over on Arrowway? That's a simple yes or, I mean, it takes him five seconds to answer that. Or is there a speed bump on?
It's get back to the research thing, it gets back to, you got to do some work.
If we want to give you an accurate answer, which is what I would always like to do, then I want to do the research.
Marty saying, why did, have you looked at this piece of equipment that's used? Rather than bringing it up at the deal, notify him on Friday or when you get your, over the weekend when you get past it, shoot him a text or an email saying, hey, why don't you look at this? That way he has Monday and Tuesday to research it.
And you could, you could still ask the question.
You should still ask the question.
But then he has the research to come back to you with, to say.
That's fair.
What he has to, if it's just, hey, a resident told me that the sign was, I told you about it, is a fixed yet or?
That's fine.
You're not blasting us, it's, we should know that answer.
It's Thursday, the sign's down.
The day to day and, you know, the other bigger, bigger picture thing.
Like my, you know, you brought up that my graphics only costs 250 bucks so they can get them up in Little Falls. Well, I could research that and I could have said, yeah, this is what it gets me. It gets me a sign about that big, that's what it would get me.
And it would get you toothpaste, or is it?
It would get me toothpaste.
So is 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 there an agreement on this? I'm just trying to pin things down, but not speed it up beyond, and this works for department heads also? This sort of fits with what your needs are?
No, and I think that, I think that makes sense. If you do have a question that you think about when you're up there during council, just understand that if we don't know the answer, we'll just let you know, we'll off you back in two weeks or whatever.
Yeah, the council's great with that and that's fine.
So this, so the, and then, and then, I saw Zach, you made a note about the 120 day on on planning approval stuff that there was a piece related to.
We could, we could change those things. So that's the kind of communication, if you guys think that's something great, let us know. Because if we can, we may be able to change something really quickly, like, that's an easy change for us to do. If you guys want to see things more than once, that's simple. But we don't know.
If you think my list of stuff I bring to councils long, you should see the stuff I bring. Most of it's not easy.
I just have a question because I'm looking, I I know this is a fresh start moving forward, but Dennis, if you don't mind, I've been looking for a little bit historically, any council member can kick in, but I I've heard it numerous times in some capacity that there's things that were done kind of behind closed doors and not on in the public. I don't know if there's, I'm just trying to better understand, it doesn't have to be a specific incident, but kind of what that looks like.
I I think the the things that I've seen it, I I can think of two examples, but the reasons they weren't brought up in front of the cameras is because the residents wouldn't be overly impressed. One of them, what, actually, that was one of them, so there was an issue with power lines, varying power lines.
Sure.
It just showed up on the agenda and it turns out that there was some discussion that happened prior to it. And it was decided and all of a sudden it's on the agenda. And the reason that that I think it wasn't made public is because nobody wanted to talk about what that would do to utility bills. And it turned out that two of the electric companies came in and said, here's what it's going to do to the bills. They were very blunt about it and then it was dropped, it was killed. But it was just frustrating because it just showed up out of the blue.
No discussion in advance or no, you didn't know anything basically, it just showed up, okay.
Um, and another one had to do with a discussion about a TIF that that the, that the discussion was difficult to have in front of the public because that TIF receiver would be seeing it.
Oh, sure, okay.
And so, yeah.
No, I was just curious, so thank you.
Yeah, so so really, it's 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 areas where there might be some embarrassment or maybe some something you 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 want to hide from the public. Sometimes there's legitimate reasons to hide something, but again, if you're talking about personnel, it's frustrating to talk about personnel in front of the camera because some of this stuff is personal.
Yep, I understand.
Yeah, so that's.
Good.
Are you talking like staffing?
Not necessarily staffing.
Like raises and, is that what personnel issues?
That can be, that can be a little bit.
Because you need negotiations or closed.
Yep, those are closed, yeah, it's.
But it would be like salary increases, just like if you do a bump in, or like if you're going to hire, okay, say you got an internal candidate and you're talking while he's sitting there, talking in the public.
The city admin piece has been awkward for me. I know we have to talk about it and I know it's part of the job. It doesn't make any less awkward for me to have to talk about, knowing that we have to do it. And Zach is sitting right next to me as we're literally talking about him right there. And it's, but he, I think he knows and I think we all know we have to do it, it's just awkward as all get out.
But I think if that's.
Some have big enough, thick enough skin to be able to handle that and some don't. I mean, hopefully, when we walk out the door, we all start over again.
But I think in those issues, you can ask that employee to leave the meeting and then discuss it while he's outside the meeting and then invite him back after the meeting. Not saying that the employee can't go and watch it on camera later, but at least you're not discussing it in front of him and he's not.
It helps the conversation.
Yeah, it helps because you guys don't feel pressured because we're sitting there.
Yeah.
You know, if you you're like promoting, when I got promoted from interim chief to chief, I sat in that chair and listened to the whole conversation.
Yeah, and that's.
Where it should have been, I should have been asked out of the room, you guys discuss it.
We could do that.
I don't have a problem with any of them, I mean, I hope.
You, they they don't have to leave, but they probably will.
It makes it easier, I think, I think, I agree with you, it makes it easier for council to let that person.
Does it make it easier for the, my question would be, does it make it easier for the staff member? I'm looking, you went through it.
I I would say I would have preferred to be out of the room.
Okay, Zach, should we make one opinion? Would you do a preference or no preference or?
I think it would, if you would have asked me to leave, I think I would have done it.
But what's your preference is my question.
I have no problem with it in front of me or not, I I have really tough skin. So I'll be honest, whatever you say to me, it really doesn't, I walk out the door and it's like, yeah, okay, sounds good. Next step, unless you tell me you hate me, then it's going to be a little different.
I'm so logical that you're not at the door anyways, so it's not going to matter.
Yeah, but if that, if that's the request, I don't think anybody's going to say no.
As long as it doesn't get personal, I don't think it's a big deal.
You know, we did all that salary administration stuff where we were looking at bumps on all those positions. I found that incredibly awkward, you know, coming from the private sector. We would have never done salary administration in front of the employees or in front of the public. I thought this was nobody else's business here and yet here we are on camera.
But it is, some of that stuff, especially when you're talking about maybe possible discipline, you you have to discuss, geez, you know, what what do we, what do we want to do here and?
You can't do that.
And then you're really stuck because now you're not even talking about an individual or you haven't got to that point yet and right there, it's got to be on camera, so it's it's clunky, but.
That's the public sector.
That's the, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So this conversation started with the understanding roles and objectives. Is there something in addition that this relates to that you want to bring up? Or does this pretty much cover, it actually covers several of the items, but I want to, I just want to check in before I cross something off.
I don't think we cross this one though, maybe, I think so, communication style and email.
Yeah, I I think actually you've actually covered a lot of good territory here, but I just wanted.
Feel free to cross off.
So so in terms of understanding roles.
The more the better.
Yeah, and objectives, is that, are you, is that a cross off or is there more to discuss?
I feel like that one's.
You're good, okay, I'm taking your lead. Okay, now, the communication between council and staff, what does it look like? I think, it sounds like you just have a really good discussion about it right now.
We do, yeah.
Are there other aspects of it? For example, there was a comment early on about open and honest, which is, I think, seems to be part and parcel of clearing the air about what the expectations are and so on. Are there other things that you want to bring up? Now's a great time or does this cover what you need?
If, two things I think I'd like to bring up. One, we've kind of talked about, which is, I have not had any problems with this for many, I know in the past it has and we shouldn't dismiss the past, we want to make sure we don't forget it, this doesn't happen again. So I think, but I think it's more to recognize, is anyone else on council feeling this is an issue today? That we don't get open and honest communication from staff? Okay, is anyone on staff think we don't, you don't get open and honest communication from the council?
I think that staff gets the, looking forward in the communication, they get stuck together because I think a lot of times we're constantly fighting old battles that previous mistakes have been made and previous decisions were handled inappropriately or whatever and we're constantly having to disprove that or fight those battles that aren't, shouldn't be there.
You're attempting to regain trust that was lost by somebody else, not by you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think to, for communication, I think the onus goes back to the individual a little bit. Scott, for my, Scott and I had a great conversation after council, Tuesday, whatever it was, our last council.
Last, two, two weeks ago.
Yeah, so I just stopped him and talked to him and I thought it was a great conversation. So I think there's a little bit of having that ability to, like, for me, I I don't have an issue with that, you know, hey, Dennis or Scott or David or whatever the case may be, hey, I got this question for you or whatever, taking that opportunity because I think it's important for staff at this level to have that ability to do that. It might not be along, because I think that just builds that trust and that rapport with with council in that capacity by doing that instead of trying to.
Either other way.
Yeah, or guess or whatever, assume what Scott meant or whatever and take that opportunity. But I think sometimes staff, not me, but I'm not trying to speak for everyone, but staff might be reluctant in that capacity to do that potentially. But I think that's how we build that relationship.
Or maybe they don't have that opportunity, not that they're reluctant, maybe they don't get that opportunity.
Well, I would say at this level, I would say.
I would choose to make the opportunity. I think, I think that goes two ways. All of our phone numbers are posted, our emails are there, like, we're, if you want to meet, I don't, I'm going to speak. I may have everyone, if I speak incorrectly, it's not like I put my foot in my mouth, but I think all of us are open to, hey, you talked to her real quick, like the chief did, do you have a second? And we're all open to that, none of us would, unless we're like, I got to get to my kid's birthday party, like, can we meet next week? But like, but but for the most part, like, we're open to that and we have no problem with that. So and I I think it goes both ways. I think we as council need to make sure that we're doing the same.
So if I can just add a piece in terms of thinking about the surveys and the and the conversation that I had, every council and staff has its own balance point about how much is enough and when is it too much and when is it not enough? And I don't know if that's a conversation that you want to have explicitly or if that's something that will just sort of sort itself out as you move forward. I mean, is it, don't call me about these kinds of things or?
Oh, yeah, I think there's a, I think, me personally, I have a natural balance. I know what I want to bother these guys with and what that that I can have of myself. If I need to make them aware of something, then I've got their phone numbers or I'll grab them or whatever. But it's not going to be, you know, like we said before, it's not going to be the day to day issues. It's going to be the higher level things that they might get contacted about, it might impact them that they need to know about. But, you know, it's not like, oh, my guy's knocked off a mailbox today plowing. It was at this address, he might be getting a call. That that's something that is in my domain to, for me to handle. Higher level stuff, then that's when I will reach out to these guys. And I don't have any issue with making those calls or having that conversation because I can talk to all these guys and get, you know, I hope we can have open and honest dialogue between us.
And for for me, I went to Zach when I had all my stuff. I went to Zach and I said, we need to have a meeting for the fire department and I want you to include council. So like council, because of stuff coming around the other way, so to make sure that you guys were involved in that process. So I think it's that ability to just have that good open communication and know that, hey, this is what, you know, we as a director or whatever, we have that ability. So I think it's that important opportunity to, you know, and some people aren't comfortable in that. But I think at this level, all of us in this room have to have that ability to go to one another and have that conversation regardless of what it's about.
Yeah. One thing that I've noticed with other groups, and again, I don't know that applies to you, is that when there is sort of working toward a change in working relationships, I'm thinking about the past, the way things were whenever the past was here, that it's not always smooth. It's always a little bit clunky and there'll be not necessarily missteps, but someone makes a judgment call, I'm going to call on this and the other side thinks, you know, why are you bothering me? And this is maybe obvious, but it can be helpful just to remember, people are acting out of good faith and be resilient and you'll sort it out over time rather than kind of getting snappy at each other about things. Because it's a learning process to change patterns of communication. And what I'm, what I'm hearing is, I don't know if it's change or reinforcement, but just remembering everyone's trying to do the right thing. And if it's a little too much or if it's not enough, that's actually a pleasant conversation that can happen. It doesn't have to be an angry kind of thing. I don't know if this captures other things, so communication between council and staff, you you picked up that there were a piece, have we covered this item? Communicate between council and staff, what does it look like, open and honest? Keep it, cross it out for tonight?
I'm in the mood to work things off.
No, I think it's good. I think just make sure that we continue to do that moving forward too, is that if there's something that comes up or we have something that would like to talk about, the preliminary plat I look at as a prime example. Is if you guys would like to see something more often or quicker or whatever, please let us know whether that's myself or corporate director or whatever.
I think my last comment around the open and honest and in my time here, you know, I don't feel like anybody has ever, you know, lied to me certainly, you know, I do feel like, and nobody in this room qualified with that. I did feel like it for a period of time that I was only getting information that supported a certain outcome. And that was, you know, distressing to me that I didn't feel like I was getting the whole story on some things. And I don't feel like that anymore.
That's great.
Um, so that's, that's good that we're past that, but I I never felt like some, you know, I, in a way, that's being dishonest, but I don't feel like it was dishonest and that anybody was lying to me.
Right, I mean, what what I'm hearing you describe is the difference between having a candid conversation and having a curated conversation where you're trying to shape an opinion. And what I'm hearing you say is the candid conversation is, that's what we want to have.
Can I ask you a question of council, and this is again coming from the not public sector? So if I went to my boss and I had these two things, right, and a decision had to be, presenting at the end decision had to be made, I would always of those two things say, these are the two decisions that have to be made, this is the one I recommend and here's why. I feel like I've heard from multiple on staff that their recommendation is not what the council wants. They just want the facts and the council's going to figure it out. I personally like the recommendation because these people have, well, between the department heads combined, have over 100 years of experience, you know, in in this sector and I have two months. So like, for me, it's helpful to have that. So like for me, it's helpful to have that.
Typically get recommendations. It may be when there's issues though, then you, I'll notice that, or if there's some politics, I'll notice that there's a lack of a recommendation because they kind of want to stay out of it. But typically I see, we see recommendations.
So my question is, do you, I want recommendations, do we as a council as a whole, if they're going to present something with options, do we want recommendations? Like I think this is what we should do and why, or we prefer they, I want it, but I'm curious what everyone else, how everyone else is.
On the staff report, there's always a recommendation at the very start of it.
I definitely do want the opinions and the recommendations from the subject matter experts because as much as I like to think I know everything, I know I don't. And, you know, so I need that and I want that. And, you know, I may disagree with the, ultimately what the right thing to do, or my conclusion of the right thing to do is, because I've got to look at it from a different lens. You know, what is, you know, this, I'll pick on Marty.
Yeah. I was going to go to Gary. He's going to want a four million dollar fire truck.
But okay, Marty needs something and he's certain that this would be the best thing that would make his department work the most efficient, right? And he makes a good case for it and that's, and I get it and I understand why he wants it. And I have to look at it from the lens of how does this fit into the budget? You know, the business of, you know, we want to, we want a stable budget here and we only want to spend the new, the tax capacity, you know, that's our guiding light in these things going forward and how does it fit into that? So I've got to look at it with a different lens. But that doesn't mean I don't want his opinion, I absolutely do.
Yep.
Or if it's something that Gary wants or Paul, you know, and so on. So absolutely I want those things, but you know, doesn't mean I'm going to come to the same thing.
I'm not saying I also am going to always agree with staff. I'm just curious, because I've heard from staff members, like they don't want recommendations, we just give them the facts and they'll make the decision. So this is a good opportunity for us all to talk about it without naming names of like.
Yeah, and there's, usually there's also kind of reasoning in there, so I.
And that's why I try to include a lot of information.
Recommendations, yeah.
And to me.
For the subject matter expert.
If the expert is saying, you know, here's why, and I look at that in my trade-off, like they've said, that, I don't think that played enough of a part in that decision, then I'll counter that. But I mean, typically when we get stuff from say, like planning, that's an example, planning commission will make recommendations, I'll look at it and I'll assume that's where I'm going until I read in it and I'm like, oh, wait a minute here. Then I may counter it, but. Yeah, for the most part, that's a starting point to me.
I just want to make a comment and I don't disagree with that. The thing that I, from my perspective, is that I want you to understand how the department, the fire department, being that I'm fire chief, operationally operates. When I'm asking for something, instead of saying that, it's not, it's a need or a want, and I know Scott says it all the time, and I don't take it personally, but I want you to understand what, why the need is there. And it's a lot of times, if you don't understand the operations of it, it might not make sense of what we want. So I'll use the pickup truck or another vehicle that's coming up. Big picture, I understand that we don't want another staff vehicle, but I'm here to tell you that there's reasons for that staff vehicle and I tried to explain a little bit of that, but if you don't understand the operations of the department, other than we have big red trucks and somebody calls 911 and they go down the road, there's a lot of other small things that go behind that reasoning to try to push that forward in that capacity. Outside of now the four and a half million dollar ladder truck, it went up $500.
Went up $500, in just a minute and a half.
But I just want you to understand what that is, instead of going, oh, we're going to spend money and now we have another Reese, another asset if you will, but there's a real reason behind it. And understand it globally from not maybe your personal perspective, I understand Scott being a business owner, not picking on you like I said, but.
I got a really big shoulder and really thick skin.
But I mean, from that perspective of, he runs a successful business, so I understand that, but there might be other reasons outside of the almighty dollar of why we need to do it because there's operational efficiencies or stuff like that that I want people to understand. So instead of saying based on financial only, that's what I, again, Gary's opinion, it seemed to have gotten, well, it's a need or a want, and so like, let's talk about radios.
Radios, I wanted to go there.
Yeah, so radios, so I'll talk about radios. When, and granted, I didn't know how we did our radios when I first came, five days after, so that stuff for me was capital stuff. And here we do it on a monthly basis and I have a consultant, Zach, to better understand how the city wants to do those things. But the bigger thing is, is that when I first came, my initiation was, no, 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 or hey Marty, you need to buy the $5,000 roller versus the $25,000 roller because I found it on eBay or whatever the case may be. And I respect that because you're like, you're trying to be judicious with the community's dollars, but at the same time, there's those operational efficiencies that come in because of the $25,000 one that you may not understand. So I just want everyone to understand that it's not just about the dollars, there's intricacies that come behind that as a result of why we're asking for whatever that specific thing is. That can be, we can talk about the $5 million ladder truck, kidding, but the reality is, there's needs for that now because of many things. And if you don't have all the information, I believe, since I've been here, councils make decisions based on dollars alone and not having all the information needed.
Totally disagree with that.
Nope, that's just my opinion. Since I've been here, that's what it's been.
Here's a really, here's a really good example of that. The radios.
Yep.
When you brought it up, and I don't know how many radios, I forgot how many radios you even need, something like that, and it's 11,000 bucks. Not a ton of money by no means. And I don't know whether you need five, 10 or 20, I have no clue. However, I had a fireman tell me, well, we got enough radios, I heard Matt talking about them radios and we got enough radios, we're just not using them properly. We have four radios, there's two radios in each truck and a headset, if people use the headset. And there's two firemen that go tag team, tag team in each room, so one fireman should never ever be caught alone without a radio. I don't know whether, I don't, I have no clue.
Well, that was our discussion, so to close the loop, that's what Scott and I talked about. The reality is, is that firefighter has an interest in going into a burning building without the ability to communicate outside, I'd probably want them to second guess themselves because they fall through the floor, they lose contact with that person in front of them, they have no way to communicate that guess what, I'm injured or hurt and I don't know that, in that capacity. So again, we have a very young fire department where they have not had experience of a fire to understand why I'm asking for resources.
So you're asking, you're saying that that particular fireman, yes, two people go together, but if one of them falls through the floor and he doesn't have the radio, the other guy's got it.
Or the wall falls between them.
It's like sending a cop on the road without a radio.
I get it.
Yeah.
What I'm looking for is not, it's, the dollar amount is the dollar amount. And, you know, it's, for me, you got to paint the picture, okay?
Yeah.
You got to get me there.
Yeah.
And I'm going to ask questions about it, whether it costs five cents or $5 million. And Marty knows that and, you know, I just want to understand it. And so I'm going to ask those questions every time and you got to paint that picture for me and that's my expectation. And so bring me the information, make your case.
And that's one thing.
And it's the way it's, when I came in, I didn't feel like that was historically the process in city government. It was, here's the CIP, this is what's on our list and we've done the prioritization and so now approve the budget. And, you know, I did budgets for 30 years of my 40 years and my boss never once took a budget from me and said, great job Dave, go ahead, move ahead.
You're not sarcastic.
And the first time we did a budget here, when I started asking questions about why things were on the list, I got the strangest looks about it. It's like, well, that's not, you know, we don't challenge these things, was the impression I got and it's like, why on earth not?
The council, when I got on, the instruction was, by the then mayor was, you have to prove they don't need it.
Right, so my challenge is not, not because I want to say no, it's because I need to understand it. That's how I operate, I got to know how things work, that's just how I'm wired.
And if money was our only.
So paint the picture for me, that's, that's.
If money was our only concern, Marty wouldn't have got his employees.
I will say that, I will clarify Gary's comment and I will clarify Dennis' comment together, in that the council is worried about dollars and taxes, which that is their goal and their objective for their role. We are, as department directors and then department heads and city administrator, are worried about operations and how we can make it more efficient for each other. And where the mesh doesn't happen is if you don't provide the right explanation from department heads of why you need that, why it happens, and you just expect them to say yes, that's when the pushback happens. And so if we don't have that explanation, which is what we need, that's we, we want to provide that.
We've had some significant expenses that we didn't question, my understanding is there's maybe questions about the last fire engine we bought.
Yeah.
We didn't question that, we just assumed that the experts were telling us we needed it.
Correct, yeah. Exactly. And it's those things that get us into, get us into issues that if we don't explain and you just say yes, and then the next council comes in and goes, why do we have that extra fire engine? And you're like, well, because the fire department, the fire chief before us said yes, we needed it. And then everyone's like, huh, I guess we got a fire engine, congratulations.
The only thing I can say about that is we are in a better position now.
Because we have it.
Because we have it, but I mean, so we can use it.
But to close the loop and to tell, you know, kind of mesh the picture is, we want council to ask the questions, we want you to have the understanding of why it's needed. And we, as department heads, have no problem explaining why we need that. That's not what we're wanting, we just want to make sure that you understand that we're not just asking for it just because we're asking for it, we're asking for it because we need it in some sort of operations. We have no problem with the questions, I'll tell you that right now. And you might even say no to it first, that's great, but we have reasons.
I can say one thing as well, I know that you guys are worried about tax dollars and keeping the levy.
I'm not a Democrat if you haven't noticed.
Neither am I.
But what I'd like to say is, staff is also aware of that and we're not spending tax dollars because it's easy money to spend. I'm always aware and I know that the rest of staff are aware of their tax dollars and we need to use them wisely. So we do take that part of it very seriously as well. And where there's a saving to be made, we will do that.
I think the hardest thing for us to explain is staffing needs, because I think a lot of it, you know, you guys want stat-based driven deals, well, it ain't always a stat-driven profession. Like for a police department, you look at numerous studies have been done that were, what did I send you, three cops per thousand people is the average?
2.5 per thousand is what you.
Yeah, is the average.
You showed me the report, that's it.
Yeah, is the average for a police officer now, where everybody's still stuck on the one per thousand. There's a whole lot of instances of response times and it was numerous studies that have been done. And so that, when we're trying to get staff and making it into a staff report, that's where it gets the difficult part because it's hard to explain other circumstances of why we need staff. I can understand the equipment portion of it because the equipment stuff, we should be able to directly say in our staff reports exactly what we need them. Where staffing levels, I can't come to you and say, because I'm going to put it out here right now, my next budget for 2024 is going to ask them for four cops. So that is, for me to now have to try to come up with how I'm going to present it is where the difficulty comes into it because you guys look at the top dollar, I'm looking at, this is what I need for top rate my police department. And this is why I need to, and to be able to explain just off of statistics, that isn't what our job is considered anymore. You know, we got outside instances of people that travel through our city, you know, half of our criminals that are committing all our thefts are coming from Coon Rapids, Ham Lake area, that's where they're coming to. So our investigator spends a lot of time over in Coon Rapids, over in Ham Lake, a lot of our stolen cars that are getting taken out of here are ending up in Minneapolis. So it's more of, I need the resources to do what the job is. And I'll throw it out there, Hutner has been very vocal to you guys about what my investigator, when his generator was stolen. He was in that night, sitting on that car that evening, got the car, ended up being a stolen Jeep from somewhere else, finally worked with Coon Rapids PD to find the correct suspect, tracked the suspect, found the storage shed that the supposedly generator was stored at, did a search warrant on that, the suspect got picked up, he went to interview him and the suspect told him to go pound sand, went to tell him where the generator was. So we charged him in Hennepin County, we charged him, they said, well, Sherburne County has him on this, this and this, we're just going to incorporate it with Sherburne County charges. And we still can't find the generator because the guy won't tell us where it is. So until we get, you know.
Until you get the generator.
But you know, he's saying that we're still waiting on DNA. We can't force crime lab to give us that DNA. The news just had it, BCA is hiring how many more people to process DNA quicker? We can't make his case jump to the front of the line when there's homicides and sex assaults. So it's just a long, drawn-out process in our, in my profession and it isn't statistic-driven anymore, unfortunately.
And I would say what you're asking for is still much lower than the statistical reports averages have said that we should have. You were very clear with me, you're like, I'm not saying any 25 police officers, what I'm saying is I need some staff, like we're under staff. And I would say that, we talked about budgets and not, I don't know the right way to say this, not raising the budget but using new budget dollars that come in, that's maybe the best way to say it, not by the direct way, but the way I think of it. I believe, and I truly believe this, having knocked on 80% of the doors out there, that if we go to residents and we say, your taxes are going up 20 bucks a year, but you're going to get two full-time officers on at all times versus one or zero, depending if they're going downtown to drop off somebody they've arrested, you know, if we can present to them what they're getting for that, I think when people get upset, and I get upset about this, and the government just take more money from me. But if I had someone tell me, this is what you're getting this year for your money, you're getting four new cops and you're getting XYZ and it's only going to cost you, even if it was a, it's just, I'm picking, I'm not saying it's what it should be, I'm picking a number because the math is easy, it's 120 bucks a year, it's going to cost you 10 bucks a month more. But for 10 bucks a month, when you're getting all this, that's one less cup of coffee at Starbucks or maybe two a month. Most people are willing to give that up to pay the 10 bucks a month in order to get, the people I talk to at least, are willing to see better roads and better coverage and better support and all that stuff done if we can show them what we're doing. And then people get upset is, we just raise taxes, they don't know what it's for. But it's never been put in a dollar and this is what you're getting, it's never, in the history of data, it's ever been. My point is, we can do that, we can own that and we can present that and we can do it in a way that makes sense because that's how most companies operate. Like we can run it that way, that's what we choose to do with it. So I mean.
Well, yeah. You want to be careful though, when you talk about that, because typically budgets come down, they don't go up. I mean, hierarchy wise. My boss gives me a budget, I don't give him, you know.
I think that's where, yeah, public is a different word. The budget's come up.
The way this works is, residents really don't get a say much in what they get billed other than every election time. So, and I think, you know, maybe your point is, we made a massive drop in what we were doing in the past two years to residents. So now, used to be, when you go to a door that is, that was by far the number one hit, was taxes, fix this thing. I didn't hear that much last time, I heard other things.
What I'll also tell you is, if you want to attract three-quarter million dollar houses, you can't do it when there's one officer on it at some time of the day. People aren't happy with that. Or that we've got water that comes out of the faucet, it's brown. Fixing that stuff costs money and I get that. But at the same time, I think there's a level of quality that people are expecting. If we want to attract people, I think you said it in the past, you want these more expensive houses come in, we need to have. I'm not saying three-quarters, I mean, that's going to at some point be the. It's happening right now, the neighborhood right next to me, they start at 600,000 and once you add the rest of it, you're three-quarters a million easy. Right. They're, they have higher expectations. Absolutely, that person does. Because they're spending three-quarters million dollars.
You will hit a point where they will say, eh, no, it's not worth that. I have no problem if we could somehow.
They're all sold.
Communicate that. No, I'm talking about what they want to pay in taxes.
I don't disagree, we can't just turn on, charge them, you know, twice the payout.
What I'm saying is, if you give them a dollar amount for some improvement, I have no problem with that. But be careful what you're asking for. Because a lot of people may not give you the answer you think you're going to get.
Could be. And in two years, they'll hold me up.
I want to do a check in. I mean, it's your conversation. Um, it sounds like you're moving into tax policy, which is very important and that may be a separate, that may be a separate agenda item. But what but where this came from, if I if I'm tracking the conversation was Gary, when when you brought, when when you guys were talking about. Okay, how, there is a, I'll make, I'll make a general claim, but I've seen it in a lot of cities. There is a natural and healthy tension around budget requests and and it's just baked in. And what is helpful is to understand what the council needs to know so that you're fully informed, so you can make your decisions. And that that may mean I need more information or give me more justification. And the tipping point often is when it feels like it's just pushback as opposed to inform me. And I'm not picking on the council. I mean, it's on, it's on both sides. But that's what I'm hearing is that that's a natural tension point and just to notice it and it's normal and not take it personally and and you just sort of navigate it through. And I'm, I don't know if that's been your experience or moving forward, that's not a problem or if there's a decision you need to make around it. But it seems like that's kind of where this conversation started.
Sometimes, again, take ownership of my opinion. It's looked at as a want from their perspective, not understanding the intricacies and the operational efficiencies that it will bring from our perspective. So providing what David's looking for, that makes complete sense. I need data and I've said that without a doubt. Because I know that. I've figured that out by being at councils that David needs data to back it up. And I think anyone would want that in order to, you know, make that purchase or whatever it is. I mean, it's no different than you do in your personal life.
I think oftentimes we're, what I hear is we're asking questions because we haven't gotten enough of what we need to tip the scale. And so I think the 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 point is, is then if we're asking questions, maybe recognition that we didn't get enough of what we need. And on the flip side, know that we're not asking questions to try to say no, we're asking questions to help get that scale tipped. So we're trying to work together sometimes to figure out like, maybe there's more here I'm not understanding. So I'm trying to understand that to help tip that. I think it's a two way street of it's self recognition of, hey, maybe I didn't give enough. And we're trying to help where we can with that and get, figure out what makes sense.
And I think this 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 want versus need comes up all the time. To me, what you just said for efficiency is a want, but it may make sense. Something that's a need means we really can't go forward without this. And if you can do something to make something more efficient, sell that case. Um, because we we I I don't have a problem with wants as long as, you know, I I hear that they made sense. And I guess that's that's what it is frustrating, you know, when when we hear these things that are needs. I mean, that's all we hear is needs, needs, needs. And and when you dig in a little deeper, you find out, well, no, it's not a need. Might be a good idea, but it's not a need. And and that's, I think that's, that's one of the big things that I'd like to see is is justification for for these.
Do you think we can get over the same want and needs and come up with, rather than saying, is it a want or a need? Can we come up with something? Because it makes it sound bad if you say it's a want or a need. Because 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 as a department head, what I'm proposing or what I'm looking for is always going to be a need for my department. I'm not going to bring it to you if I don't need it.
A really good example, in my eyes, this is just my eyes. We moved Zanzibar from 26 to 23 because staff wants it. And that's 100% for the reason.
I would say for me, I had a three year old child that was not breathing. And my quickest way to respond was down Zanzibar and I could only go 30 miles an hour today going down Zanzibar with a three year old not breathing. So for me, that's a need to respond quicker to that three year old not breathing. It ain't a want for me. For me, I see it as a need that I got a faster, quicker, quicker.
So why wasn't it a need 20 years ago? Because we didn't have that.
That three year old wasn't here.
Well, their warehouse is over there.
We've got 10,000.
I don't know. I don't know what the.
Well, so what I'm getting at is it still might be a good idea. It might be, I mean, you know, again, you you look at this example, like, you know, speed limits, right? Saves lives, but there's some, there's some trade off as to as to what's efficient versus, you know, what 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 is safe. Um, I think with the budget, there's a, there's trade off between what you would like to have seen done.
To me, we're going to create another issue there by not waiting. I mean, to me, I'd rather wait a year and do the bridge too. Because to me, that makes more sense. We're going to fix that road now and we're going to rip it up.
Either, so get away from Zanzibar in general. I think my.
That's just my best example.
Yeah, I think, I think, I understand. The example, but I think that what I'm trying to get to is back to what Paul may be saying is the term want versus need is very opinionated. And I'll give you an example.
Thank you.
I think and I believe that we need two officers at all time. I think it's a public safety risk that we don't have one. I think it's a risk to the officers themselves. I think it's just a bad decision overall. We need to have two officers.
He did have that, but you just, you lost a couple of guys and you haven't been able to fill them.
Our minimums are one if somebody's on vacation.
Yep. So so I I think that's a need because I I think it's better for the radios. I think that's a need. There are people that would argue, hey, we've got.
I'm not saying it's not.
No, I I know you're not, but I'm saying you talk to someone who argued that that's not really a need because we have this.
He's a police officer or he's a fireman.
I I don't and I.
He just doesn't understand.
Correct. And I don't disagree with that. But it is an opinion to that individual. It's not a need. It's an opinion to me that is.
Words.
Yeah, I think what what Paul's.
What we've come to with want and need is they kind of sound like legitimate and frivolous.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
And I think we need to somehow work our way away from that and make it more qualitative.
Give me a better word.
The sense that I get is each department, you you have, you're the specialist, you know what you need. And the challenge, I don't tell you what, can't tell you what you're doing, but my, I imagine when you're presented with six different needs and a limited budget, you have to set priorities. Setting a priority and saying that this is a higher priority now is different than saying you don't need that.
The way that's going to get solved is you're going to get, you guys are going to get $700. You figure out how you want to spend it. That's how you solve.
And that's where it comes down from me. Right. So I take the policy from the city council and says, what do you want to see for taxes next year? And then it's my job to tell the directors and every one of them comes to me with a list of needs and wants. This big and I say, hmm, narrow it down. We're going to all figure it out. We're going to feel the fee angle. Everyone to figure out how much we can get out of the whole thing to make it work so that we can get to an appropriate tax levy. Because essentially what it comes down to at the end of the day is the tax levy.
So now I'll say that's not how like, and I know you do a lot of budgets. I had a lot of budgets in a lot of my past roles. And oftentimes we had top down and bottom up budgets. So the the top would say, this is your budget. And we come and say, well, we actually need this much. And then we'd end up meeting somewhere in the middle, right? I think that's kind of what you're saying. Like you give them a budget that was perfect, right? And I think we as a council need to to understand where we want to be. And then we need to understand the the priorities of the the city staff. And we might say, you know what, we agree with nine of these 10 priority or I'll figure it out. Eight of these 10 priorities puts us a little bit over budget, but we're okay because of this extra priority gets us. And I think having sat in the back of that room, that is not the way it feels the conversation goes on a regular basis. And maybe, maybe that's what's happening behind the scenes, but I can tell you as someone who's spent six months sitting back there.
Yeah, but you have a different outlook. I mean, the, so example, if you go back, when I first got on, the the outlook was pretty much blank check. And I don't want to offend anybody, but.
There is no bottom line. I run on a bottom line.
There was no, it was whatever capacity went up, that's what we spent. And I might argue that 2020, we blew by that because we added the franchise fee, which was another 8% on top of that. See, we had a 23% increase in one year and and that's because there were no reins pulled back.
Just spend whatever they're.
And so again, it goes back to the history's good. We can't punish the current staff or what happened in the past. And I feel like that punishment's still there.
What I'm saying is is that perspectives matter here because some of us in this room, it's already come up. Some of us look at government as it should be bigger. Some of us don't.
I don't know if it's a big, I don't look at it as bigger or smaller. I I look at it as like, what do we need to operate at a level that residents want? Okay, what, how do we prioritize what we, what needs to be done in order to.
And I'm okay with with prioritizing that with with the information we get, but at some point.
So I'm hearing again, and and again, I I, no, I I'm not being a, not a corrective. I just want to name. It sounds like there is a robust discussion about kind of budget philosophy and so on, which may.
There will always be.
Yeah, right. And 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 that's not a judgment. It it's important to have these conversations. The piece that I pulled out of this is what you identified, and that is the language of need and want. It sounds like it can be interpreted as judgmental, like you use the term frivolous. And if there's a way to develop a way to communicate across so that there isn't this unintended impact. Because I'm imagining, but I have no reason to doubt, when when the staff is presenting a budget, they're they're thinking about, do we really need it or not from their perspective? And so from their perspective, they absolutely do need it and your job is to set priorities. And if there's a way to honor that people aren't just asking for, you know, can I have a fancy car because I want a fancy car? It sounds like that would be a helpful piece. And I don't know if there's more to it than that.
But but you're you're still going to have those questions. I mean, for example, if we could go back to when we purchased that engine, I think there'd be questions right now. But because we were told by the experts, we need to have this thing.
Is that expert in the room right now?
No.
Okay. So and that and that's fine.
They were the expert at the time.
My guess is that we can find evidence to support a lot of things in the past. And the question is, what will be most helpful and constructive for all of you as you do your respective jobs? So that so that the departments will, I mean, I don't want to get ahead of myself. I think it's not as big as what I'm what I'm describing. But it just sounds like it's a communication piece to that. My sense is that you do respect that the departments care and that you do take care that you're off, you're presenting budget requests that from your perspective are needed, not wanted. And that you have a different framework for how you have to make your decisions and that you're not always going to agree with one another. And that's, I understand that. That's the role of the council.
There's a level of respect across all of that that is the bottom line number of respecting that. The the no doesn't mean that you hate me and you don't want me to have it. It's the no that you need to explain it a different way. Or how do I explain that to understand, make them understand it again?
It would be just like if you were going to your boss and saying, yeah, I know you gave me a million dollars for this thing, but if you give me a million one, here's what I can get you.
Yep.
And and that's, to me, that's the.
Correct.
And that kind of gets back to what Dave said.
I think Dave's.
So I want to, I'll stay as long as you guys want, but I do want to try and manage time. As I circle back on this, the informal versus formal communication, I think we covered that before.
Yep.
Okay. And then um communication style and acknowledgement, I think actually that kind of bubbled up what you were just talking about here. Is there more around that? Or are you feeling, I don't know if it's exhausted or just satisfied or what? Okay to cross that off? Okay. Transparency, I think, came up implicitly, just the candid conversations, the importance of that. Is that right? Yes. I don't want to steamroll here.
I think we all want to be transparent. I think that's our number one goal for all of us is to be transparent to each other and be transparent to the citizens of date night.
I think it certainly is now. It wasn't before.
I mean, all this offers in outsider, I think this has been a really healthy, robust evening, a lot of stuff, just from my perspective that you guys have worked through.
It almost turned out to be that kumbaya thing.
We consulted. You know what? I'll give you, I'll give you dots.
That is kumbaya.
So at least in terms of tonight, are, is there more to talk about in terms of either being on or moving toward being on the same page about things?
I think there's progress being made for sure.
I think there's major, at least from my perspective, there's major progress just in the healthy discussion tonight.
Yes.
And I want this to continue to be having conversations with that we don't get hurt by somebody saying no or this is your problem or whatever. Like, I want this to be a healthy partnership between everybody that we all have to be on the same wavelength. And I truly believe this, this tonight, I was not sure of what the outcome would be, to be honest. And I think we came up with a lot of great goals that I have that I'll follow up with. I think we came up with a lot of great objectives. I think tonight was an effective for everybody to just have a open and honest conversation. What can we be better with both sides and come together? So I truly, I truly appreciate everyone being here. So I think, I think we're closer on the same page than we probably have ever been, at least in what I.
Even like branding?
Sure. That's number three.
I don't want to step in. I want you to be able to close it.
Yep, yep, yep.
You guys, is there any next steps that need to be kind of named out loud? You're going to take your list and you're going to, you're going to generate it. People have a chance to look at it and do a little bit more sorting and kind of flesh it out a little bit.
I will do, like I said, I will do my best to work with department heads over the next couple of weeks to get fleshed out. So we can get it back to council for final review and then.
I make a suggestion, which is, this is really helpful for me going into budget season and trying to prioritize what's important. If you want to do something similar like this, maybe we do anyways around budget so that way we're more in sync as a whole team, staff and council.
I think we typically do that in the beginning in June.
We do a work session.
Work session in June. So likely the same thing.
Thank you.
I like the fact that there's mediator.
I'll just name the other two notes that I made. Thank you. The other two notes that I made, one is that you worked through kind of a process for handling citizen complaints and sort of getting to the department heads unless it's about the department head, in which case it goes to Zach. And that there are often exceptions. And if there are exceptions to how to handle that, then you go to Zach. And that you talked also about the communication before council meetings, how to, how to, not only within the law, but within the spirit of the law, within the spirit of it, to honor the open, open meetings principles, but also to communicate in advance. Hey, heads up, this is coming up, the council meeting. Can you look into this and and so on? Are there other decisions that you've made tonight that you want to kind of say out loud before it's forgotten?
There was the one about the seeing the plots.
Oh, plot and plot.
Yeah, 120, yeah, the 120 day piece.
We'll give you that for sure.
Okay. Well, not quite on time, but close.
No.
The only other thing I want to say out loud is to the, it maybe goes to staffing or to what to communicate. Maybe that is bringing in the city attorney more. So we have that legal advice of procedure. Um, because we don't have that and a lot of cities do have representation at their meetings and.
And we stopped doing that, but I think that was a $400 bill from Georgia every time or something.
I don't know. Yeah.
It's god awful expensive, but I know a lot of councils, the lawyers there. And there are occasions where we say, you know.
It would be nice. Yeah, I'm not saying every meeting, but maybe it's.
Once a month.
Yeah, maybe it's just a scheduled.
Every other meeting or something.
Thing.
Or specific to the topic.
The problem is, it almost seems like it needs to be specific to the.
Like we've been talking about, for example, the moratoriums that come up, I think, on the next meeting probably. And so we have some legal things that come up because of that. It might be good to have the lawyer there for that one. Just a thought.
I would, I would think every other meeting would be, whether what was on it or not, just in case.
Yeah, I I think that's a great point, Amy, because I felt that a few times, you know, where it's our legal opinion is kind of the man behind the curtain and, you know, you get it sort of the copy to the copy of the email that.
And maybe that's the inferior contract.
And then it's like, well.
Maybe that's putting in a part of the contract.
You are here. It's a procurement process.
Can I ask another question, being the new person? Are we happy with our representation or not? Because I get the feeling as the new person that we aren't necessarily.
Ladder was correct. Well, sometimes.
You're stuck in litigation.
It's a crapshoot. I I don't know that some of the things I think that are previous.
Issues.
The previous lawyer, I I think you're kind of flipping the coin sometimes. We need to do this. I I have had a couple of problems with Jay where I just totally disagree with his legal opinion and.
Well, I I also ask because we have a gentleman here who has experience working with cities, not saying that you wind it with us, but he may have references that we could.
Well, I would refer you to the legal, also to cities for, as a resource.
I I it's it's been on.
We are, we are very close to being able to do, the reason we have nothing on RFP yet, just for everybody in the room to know, is because we are currently using them for litigation. And so when you, when you do that, you add a big giant bill if you move them. You add a big giant bill right away because you have to have that person off off the speed of litigation.
But can you, can you draw a line in the sand saying going forward?
Once, yeah, once, once, we are very close to not having any litigation. We are very close. So once we have that, then it's much easier to say, let's move. And we are very close of the.
Or even if it's not moving, maybe it is just re discussing that contract that we do hold with them and maybe it's not an extra charge for meeting. Or even if it's not moving, maybe it is just re-discussing that contract that we do hold with them and maybe it's not an extra charge per meeting, maybe it's.
Communication with him too.
An expectation.
My frustration was, he's, he's, he's always given.
Well, and it could be.
What you think's could be litigated or, or defended instead of what we really should do.
Well, I, our prosecuting attorneys the same way, when you ask them a question about speed limit, he'll give you a.
The answer, not think forward for you.
Yeah, he'll give you a big, big deal of it and it's like, okay, in two sentences, you could've told me right there. I don't need the lawyer garbage.
So just to put a pin in it, what Amy brought up, the question of how to work with, whether it's this or another or whatever, the city attorney relationship, it sounds like that's another item to, to put on the list.
And, and maybe we have them show up every meeting or every other meeting for a year and see if it matters.
See how it goes, yeah.
Any other business for the good of the order? All right, so are you leaving feeling like you met your, I don't wanna say needs and wants?
Priorities for the.
Priorities for the evening, you're good?
I think we should all hold hands.
There you go, let's. First of all, thank you for letting me be part of, be part of the meeting and you guys are in, you're doing really good work. There are a lot of cities that would not be able to have the conversation you had tonight, so, so I really wanted to just say that to you all.
That's cause they're running smooth already.
Wouldn't that be nice?
You should probably go to an orno meeting.
Oof, I thought about that.
If there's any sort of follow-up, like I said, beyond these things and other stuff, then please reach out. But I appreciate everyone being here and said my piece, but, thank you.
Thank you.